Good evening, and thank you for viewing the December 15th meeting of the Arcata City Council. The City Council meeting is being held as a teleconference in response to local efforts to reduce the COVID-19 virus. New cases continue to be reported in Humboldt County. The city urges residents to get vaccinated as our best defense against the virus and the personal and economic impacts it has on our town. Before we get started, the City Council just met on two closed-session items, and at this time, there's nothing to report out. If you would like to, please join us for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Atkins Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Goldstein?
Here.
Councilmember Watson?
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. If you wish to make a comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are two ways to do so. If you are logged onto the Zoom meeting webinar, click Raise Your Hand. When it is time for public comment on the item on which you wish to speak, city staff will unmute you, and you will have two minutes to comment. You can also access the meeting by phone. Call the number at the bottom of the screen, enter the meeting ID also at the bottom of the screen, press *9 on your phone to raise your hand. When it is time for public comment, city staff will request you to unmute, and you will be prompted to dial *6 on your phone. You will hear a prompt that will indicate your phone is unmuted, and you will have two minutes to comment. So Item 3 is ceremonial matters, and we have a proclamation recognizing November 2021 as National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month and National Family Caregivers Month. And yes, I am aware it is December. We're going backwards a little bit because I was out of town and then ill, and so we were unable to get this on the agenda. So this is an important matter, and we wanted to recognize it today. So I'll go ahead and read this. This is the National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month and National Family Caregivers Month. Whereas more than 6 million Americans are living with Alzheimer's, and this number is projected to rise to nearly 14 million in the next 30 years. And whereas Alzheimer's disease is the sixth-leading cause of death in America and the third-leading cause of death in California, one in five Californians age 65-plus will develop dementia. And whereas there are 690,000 people with Alzheimer's living in the state of California, over 3,000 of whom live in Humboldt, and an estimated 9,000 caregivers in Humboldt County who are involved in the care of a loved one with Alzheimer's. And whereas more than 11 million Americans provide unpaid care for people with Alzheimer's or other dementias. In 2020, caregivers of people with Alzheimer's or other dementias provided an estimated 15.3 billion hours of unpaid assistance, a contribution to the nation valued at nearly 257 billion. And whereas, in 2020, the lifetime cost of care for a person living with dementia was With the responsibilities of caring for someone with dementia often falling to women, and whereas the Alzheimer's Association is marking November as 2021 National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month and National Family Caregivers Month. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Arcata recognizes November 2021 as Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month and National Family Caregivers Month. And thanks the Alzheimer's Association for providing services and resources to people and families coping with dementia. Stated December 15th, 2021, and signed by myself, the mayor. And hopefully, many of you saw the different exhibits and such that were around during the month of November to recognize this. So. Okay, and this is not turned on. So next, we have early oral communications. And this 15-minute time period is provided for people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. At the conclusion of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Any requests that requires council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council at this time are limited to two minutes, and we can take up to seven speakers. Please raise your hand if you are on Zoom, or press *9 if you are calling in by phone and wish to comment. I know we have a lot of people that will be speaking this evening, so I just wanted to remind that this particular time is for items that are not on the agenda. All right, do we have anyone?
Just checking now. And I see no early oral communication. Once, twice, three times, nope, no early oral communication.
Okay. So no early oral communication at this time, so we'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the City Council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. So we have Item A, which is biweekly report on general warrants. Item B, declare a continuation of the local emergency related to the coronavirus pandemic. Item C, adopt ordinance number 1553, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Arcata, amending the Arcata Municipal Code relating to purchasing procedures. Title II, Administration, Chapter IV, Fiscal Administration. Wave reading of the text and consent to read by title only. Item D, approve and amended Mariculture lease extension through December 31st of 2024, with Scott Sterner doing business as North Bay Shellfish for a portion of tied and submerged land in Arcata Bay. E, approve the purchase of five generators from PAC Machine Company for a total of $219,510.61, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. Item F, one, adopt resolution number 212-32, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata, amending the class and pay resolution, compensation and benefits for hourly, part-time, temporary, and seasonal personnel to reflect the January 1st, 2022 change in state minimum wage. And two, approve a one-time payment for the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, premium pay for eligible hourly employees of $1 per hour for the period covering February 23rd of 2020 through June 13th of 2021. And Item G, approve an amendment to the agreement with Humboldt Waste Management Authority for receiving and processing green waste, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. Do we have any council members that would like to remove an item?
Yeah, I'd like to pull Item E, please.
Sure, so we'll pull Item E. Is there any member of the public or staff that requests an item be removed from the consent calendar?
Just giving the public a minute to respond, but I see no requests for any items to be pulled, thank you.
I move to approve the consent calendar minus Item E.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, so we have a motion by Councilmember Watson and a second by Councilmember Schaefer with a unanimous vote of approval. So moving on to Item E from the consent calendar.
Yeah, I was just really pleased to see this on here. You know, increasing our disaster preparedness abilities, something I've been pushing for for maybe at least three years. I know we revamped our plan, and you know, some of our generators were outdated. And I just wanted to know, two of the generators, as just said, they were going to community buildings or maybe like shelter sites, and I was just curious what, is that the D Street Neighborhood Center and the Community Center, or what those locations were?
Want to go ahead, Emily?
Emily, well, good evening, council members, mayor, vice mayor, and community members. The city has received a Cal OES Hazard Mitigation Grant for the purchase of four generators, as well as two fuel tanks for resiliency in power safety shut-off events or other emergencies. And so this item for you today is focused on the generator's purchase, as well as one additional generator that the department, the Environmental Services, had budgeted in this fiscal year budget. And so for the question to the location of where these generators will be, the two generators would be stationed at the D Street Neighborhood Center, and then the Arcata Community Center. And as well as two other generators would be portable for use at our essential water and wastewater sites, and lift and booster stations throughout the city. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you so much.
Did you have any other questions, Councilmember Watson?
No, I'll move to approve Item E.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So Item E of the consent calendar, motion to approve by Councilmember Watson and a second by Councilmember Schaefer, and it is unanimously passed. Okay, so we're heading into old business, and the first Item A is to receive an update on the Regional Climate Action Plan. So can we please have a staff report from our Environmental Service Deputy Director, Emily Von Boy?
Good evening, council members. I have a PowerPoint, I'm going to share my screen really quickly. Let's see. Okay, it looks like you're seeing the presenter mode, let me swap that. There we go. So this presentation will be very brief, but really wanting to provide the council with just that, an update of the Climate Action Plan on our current status, as well as next steps. Community Development Director Loya is also present. He and I have been partnering on taking the staff leads for this Climate Action Plan, and he's also available to answer questions as they come up. So as I mentioned really briefly, the purpose of today's report is to provide an update on the CAP Climate Action Plan, current status, and upcoming milestones. In preparing this slideshow, I used the slideshow that we had brought to council most recently in May of 2021, which was background on Climate Action Plan, as well as the process. So a lot of these slides will look familiar. I thought it would be helpful to just build off of what we already had to really help show that sequence in time of where we've come and where we are. So taking one step back, Climate Action Plan is, or I should say, the project goal is to adopt a regional climate action plan with Arcata being one jurisdiction in the broader region to reduce greenhouse gas emissions throughout Humboldt County. A really high-level timeline is presented on this slide right here, and currently, we are right around the yellow circle, which is first draft complete. So internally, a first draft has been prepared by Humboldt County and circulated with all of the participating municipalities and jurisdictions for review and comment. We're hoping that our review and comment, or our comments, will be compiled, and mid-January, we anticipate having a draft for public review. So at that point in time, the Administrative Climate Action Plan will be available for public review and comment. And I'll jump to the next slide really quickly to talk a little bit more about what that public review will look like. So we anticipate that draft being released to the general public, welcoming specific stakeholder inputs, and we also anticipate bringing that administrative draft back to the council for more specific council review and input on that administrative draft. So I'll go back one slide. Again, looking at that broader timeline, once that administrative draft is out for public review, that draft will go to the various city councils throughout our Humboldt County. It will be reviewed by the public, and then once we have that administrative draft more fine-tuned based on that public review, the SEQA process will commence, ultimately opening up a public comments period on the SEQA document, and then ultimately, public hearings and Climate Action Plan adoption. So again, I said the presentation would be short, and so that concludes my presentation, and myself or Director Loya are happy to answer any questions that the council or members of the public may have. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. So do we have any questions or comments from the council?
Just a quick question to clarify that timeline. So as the draft is released to the public in January, then we are expected then to see this again on our agenda sometime after that, to accept public comment and all of that stuff, right? Absolutely, exactly. So the draft will be released roughly mid-January, and then during that general public review timeframe, we'll return back to council and have a more formal public comment process, if you will, at the council level.
And I just had one quick question. How often is this something that, once we've adopted it, that will be updated? Like, what's the timeframe for that?
So that's a great question. I would say timeframe is hard to answer directly, but the intent is that once the CAP is adopted, there will be continuous monitoring of the CAP monitoring program, which is almost the same thing as the mitigation of MMRP. So the SEQA document will have a monitoring component, which will effectively be the same thing as the CAP monitoring component. And Director Loya, are you, I'm curious on timeline, I want to say it's about a five-year term, that essentially milestones would be reached, and that would mirror our greenhouse gas emissions inventory, which are completed every five years, but really, there would be continuous monitoring on the regional level and implementing of programs and seeing where that advances us in our overall goals.
Yeah, I would agree with that. The intent is for this to be a long-range plan that gives us, you know, long-term goals to meet our climate objectives, but that we're continuously revisiting it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay, do we have any members of the public that are wanting to comment on this item?
We do. Our first commenter, Colin User 2, go ahead. Go ahead.
Hello?
Yep, we got you, go ahead, we can hear you.
Yeah, okay. Hi, this is Joanne McGary-McGreta. I am watching on YouTube and on the live feed, and it is so delayed that the reason you may not have had early oral communications is because those of us who are using the phone system are not caught up with you folks there on the dais in terms of what's happening live, and then the delay for us. So in my effort to try and find out about this Climate Action Plan thing, I just really, really hope that the City of Arcata takes this Climate Action Plan seriously and devotes time at every meeting to a report on what is happening and what we, as a community in the City of Arcata, are doing on this Regional Climate Action Plan, CAP, as a lot of people are abbreviating it, but sometimes saying it completely is better. And I just really, really am anxious for 2022 to be the year of action, significant action, and vital action for our community to do everything we can in all arenas to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, to create a zero-waste lifestyle, and to really talk with one another about how we can be a part of the solution. So I'd like the council to really consider implementing some sort of regular reporting on the Climate Action Plan as it is proceeding and as we are doing and then work on it. So thank you very much for listening, and I'm sorry that it's so delayed for those of us who really want to be a part of this meeting, and I look forward to being in person soon, hopefully.
All right, our next speaker is Colin, go ahead, Colin.
Hi, this is Colin Fiss with CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. I wanted to first of all thank staff for all their efforts developing the Climate Action Plan, and also to just echo Joanne's comments that the climate situation really is a crisis, and you know, I'm looking forward to the CAP sort of finally coming out and, you know, being implemented as soon as possible. I also just wanted to note briefly that it's sort of fortuitous that this item comes right before the discussion of the Gateway Area Plan, because I anticipate that the CAP will call for development of just that type, so looking forward to that discussion, thank you.
All right, I see no other public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. So this is not an action item, so do we have any final comments or questions from council? Okay, seeing none. We'll move to Item B, which is to receive an update and early public input on the gateway, Arcata Gateway Area Plan. So can we please have a staff report from Community Development Director David Loya?
Absolutely. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and council. Thrilled to be sharing this with you this afternoon, this evening. If you have a PowerPoint presentation we'll run through, it looks like I've got the wrong video up. Let's try that one more time. Okay. So many presentations. Okay, looks good. I do have a PowerPoint presentation to run through with you. I've got Rob Homeland with Plan West Partners, who's going to share in the presentation. Just to give you an overview, I do want to point out that this is, we're trying to give slightly different presentations at each of these meetings. The Gateway Plan is a very big planning document, it's a lot of moving parts, there's a lot going on with it, so we're trying to cover all of the different aspects of it in different venues. So we did have a public workshop last Thursday, we had a planning commission meeting last night, we have a one-hour video that explains the document overall, goes through, walks you through the entire document. All of those are uploaded on our Strategic Infill Redevelopment Plan webpage, and I encourage the council and the community to go there and review them. So I will run you through elements of Gateway Area Plan. I want to start a little bit with the public outreach. One of the main concerns that folks have had is that, you know, hey, I just heard about this document, and you know, it looks pretty well-developed, and am I late to the party? And I just want to reiterate to the entire community, you're not late to the party, the party's just getting started, and so welcome. But I do want to kind of address this, I've addressed it in the written staff report as well. I want to address this with the community, the amount of work that's gone into the document to date. Now, a lot of this was conceptual, but we had visuals, and we use those visuals and the conceptuals to build out this plan. So Attachment A really identifies the Strategic Infill Program Public Engagement Process, starting with the housing element and infill market study. Really ramping up in 2019, the public engagement parts of these efforts, we had meetings all throughout the community, kind of pop-up meetings, including tabling at various, you know, community events, and ultimately, in 1218, 19, the housing element was adopted. That housing element had this plan as an implementation measure for it. So we started moving into the community visioning and Gateway Area Plan outreach. As you can see, starting 1217, 20, and running all the way through current time, and we'll be updating this as we go, we've done lots of walking tours, meetings in a box, workshops on Zoom, most of it's been virtual, walking tours have been in-person. But we've really been trying to, since the adoption of the Infill Market Study, which identified some key elements that we needed to implement in order to get infill development, and really trying to engage the community and give as many opportunities as possible for public engagement. Now that we have the release of the actual document as of December 1, we're really, you know, doubling down on that engagement, making sure that folks have an opportunity to, you know, to continue to participate and tell us what you think. Okay, so what does this timeline look like? Just a super-high level, you know, from beginning of the adoption of housing element to Gateway Plan, it's been two years, really, 2017 is when we began working on the housing element with the RENA process, and we intend to adopt a Gateway Area Plan late next year. So in total, a five-year process, but really, from the time that the council said, hey, prepare this Gateway Area Plan until now, it's been three years of pretty solid engagement. Now, that doesn't mean that, you know, folks haven't heard. It's one thing to hear about this amorphous housing element that has a lot of policy in it, it's another thing to hear that, hey, something's changing in my neighborhood, and so we want to recognize that. And it's generated a lot of questions. So we're producing a document, frequently ask questions for the Gateway Area Plan, and we'll be updating this regularly as new questions come forward. One of the first and foremost questions that we want to answer for the community, though, is how do I get reliable information on this topic? There's a lot of information that's out there that isn't accurate, and we want to be able to provide accurate information. You can follow these links, or to simplify it, if you type into your favorite web browser, SERP, S-I-R-P, and Arcata, then this page pops up in the browsing results, and Strategic Infill Redevelopment Program is the top hit, that's the one you want to follow, that'll get you to our page, and give you lots of information about what's going on. You can sign up for e-notifications there, there's all kinds of information about how to engage and participate, and who to contact to get that information out there. So one of the big questions is, what's the timeline of this plan from point forward? I did cover this, but it's not until the end of December 2020. People are afraid that we're making this plan right now. Do want to be clear, though, that we need some early direction sometime in the next couple of months, as we get into this, and I explain the relationship between this element of the general plan and the actual zoning that will implement it, we need some lead time for that. Is the Gateway Area Plan in the tsunami zone? The answer is no. Is the area going to be impacted by sea level rise? The answer is no, not based on our current models, not directly. Well, this growth happened immediately. A lot of people are afraid that these, you know, eight-story buildings are all going to spring up all throughout the district, we'll get to that in detail, but no, the full build-out isn't even envisioned in the full 20-year timeline. And this is typical for zoning codes, to be able to identify a build-out potential that is much, much greater than what the actual build-out will be, and we'll talk about that a little bit more as we get into the environmental document. But this plan, what we're establishing in this plan could potentially, and other zoning changes that we'll be adopting throughout the city, could potentially meet the city's housing and development needs for the next 50, 60, or 70 years. In fact, we've been relying on the zoning, the residential zone property that was identified in the 50s, since the 50s, without substantial increases in the number of residential parcels since that time, and so it's not uncommon to have a planning horizon that's much shorter than the actual total build-out. This is a big one. Will existing businesses and residents be forced to relocate? Are we kicking people out with this plan? The whole new zoning code coming in, it has new regulations, new ambitious goals, the answer is no. Businesses can continue to thrive in the area, they can continue to work for as long as they want, they can sell their business, they can transfer their business to their, you know, their children, and continue to maintain and operate the businesses exactly as they are. In fact, the plan calls for promotion and employment-focused businesses. So all of these businesses that are out in the area right now, they can continue to operate, we're not kicking anyone out, we want to embrace all of these businesses that helped make Arcata what it is. The few businesses that consume entire city blocks with low employment, businesses such as Mini Storage, we're encouraging those to relocate somewhere else in Arcata. Are we encouraging to do that tomorrow, in the next 10 years, the next 20? No, but the plan does allow for it. And so if these uses don't redevelop, that doesn't hurt the plan, that there's plenty of area within the plan to develop and meet the city's needs, but over time, these uses may be phased out. In fact, the city wants to, you know, help these businesses relocate if they choose to. And lastly, the plan doesn't call for the relocation of any existing residents, there's no requirement, if you own a home in the Gateway Area, that you would have to move. You can continue to improve your home, if you want to add a second unit, you can add a second unit, if you want to do a second story, you can do a second story. Nothing in this plan that prevents you from continuing to use your property the way that you'd like to. Parking is a huge issue and parking is a huge issue that you can't win no matter what you do. Folks are going to tell you that there's too much. Other folks are going to tell you that there's too little. But this plan does have an ambitious goal to move towards a car free lifestyle, move towards a car free neighborhood, a place where you could walk and, and work and live all in the same place. And so the plan is, just as the plans in the downtown de-emphasize parking, this plan is designed to de-emphasize parking and encourage other modes of transportation. We can talk about the detail on that as the, you know, to the council's discretion. So yeah, the, the zoning is changing. Right now, the entire zone is zoned industrial and we're proposing an entirely new zoning district that would allow for these new uses. We'll get into what those zoning districts are in the, in the next section. Does the area propose to make it easier for develops, developers to build new buildings? And the answer is yes. We'll talk about how that works on the next part of the presentation. But yeah, the idea is that we want to work as a community to design out what the buildings need to look like in this district. What community benefits or amenities do we want to see out of these projects? We put that into a plan and then developers can come in and build for us the things that we said we wanted. So that's the plan. If you don't build according to that plan, you can still build. It just requires a planning process. So it does streamline development, but it also makes sure that we're getting the kinds of development that we feel like we need to, to have in that area. So how do we get engaged? Again, back to that SERP webpage, participate. And we talked about not having heard about the plan earlier, but really this is the core message. You're just now hearing about Arcata Gateway Area Plan for the first time. City welcomes you to the ongoing conversation and invites you to participate, comment, and influence the content of the vision of the plan. Okay. With that, we're going to transition. I'm going to take a drink and let Rob Homeland take over the next part of the presentation. Welcome, Rob.
Thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Super. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Staff. It's an honor to be here. That's the one I want to share. There we go. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the plan and the, some of the contents that it contains. For those of you who don't know me, I am the former Community Development Director for the City of Eureka. So I'm very familiar with this sort of plan and, and our region. And before I get into the details of the plan, I just wanted to address something that I personally have experienced a lot, which is a ton of people saying, we really need to do something about our lack of housing. But make sure it's not too dense and require a lot of parking and make sure that their buildings aren't more than four stories. In fact, we don't want too many four story buildings. And don't add any new traffic and don't impact any open space and don't do too much of that affordable housing stuff. And I don't want to see these housing projects on my way to work. And please don't change anything about my community. And also I definitely only want really small, modest projects in my neighborhood. And I think that people are genuine when they say, hey, we really need housing. And the genuine when they identify all of these as priorities that they want to maintain. But what I've come to hear when I hear this is I want magic housing that has no impacts, that no one can see, and that doesn't change anything about my community. And what people are really asking for is a magic flying rainbow unicorn. It's, it's a really great dream, but you can't have both the housing that you want and no impacts of any kind at all. And I think what a lot of people envision when they talk about housing and wanting more housing is more single family residential, which plays a really critical role in our community. Unfortunately, there's effectively nowhere left to do any substantial amount of single family residential in Arcata. McKinleyville's got some space for a little while longer. Fortuna can do it for a little while longer. Eureka and Arcata just simply don't have any remaining space to do single family residential, unless you're going to start chopping down a lot of trees or going into your ag lands. So I'm on this campaign right now that we need to be honest with ourselves about this topic. We, it, it's not enough anymore, I think, to say we have a housing shortage. It's not enough to say we need more housing. We have to be more specific about what we mean by that. How much housing? Specifically, how much? What types of housing? Where should this housing go? How important is parking? Is parking more important than housing? Are tall buildings okay? How tall? Is it okay to shade neighboring buildings? Are you okay with new housing in your neighborhood? So I think it is perfectly acceptable to say, I only support single family residential, or I only support 200 more housing units in Arcata, or I don't like anything over four stories, even if that limits housing potential, or every housing unit must have two parking spaces. But I would advocate that it's no longer okay to say, we need more housing. And then to oppose everything that can generate housing. So I collectively encourage all of us to really have, do some soul searching and have some open, friendly conversations with ourselves, with each other and say, do we really want housing? We talk about it a lot. But it means something. If you want housing, it's going to mean some impacts. We have to be more specific about what we mean when we say that. And here's a good example of the details of how that works. So Director Loia really inspired me to produce this series of slides this morning and saying, we really need to come up with some balancing of our priorities. Through all those meetings, those three pages of meetings that Director Loia pointed to, the community consistently said, we need more housing. And so if housing is our number one priority and we're looking at a scale of less housing to more housing, then it's pretty simple what we're shooting for. Right? We can just dial up the dial and get more housing. But there's other priorities that people also want. There's parking standards. There's allowable building heights, the complexity of the permitting process. So each one of these can be its own dial. So for parking, you can have from more parking to less parking. And that's kind of got an inverse relationship with housing. The more parking you require, the less housing you're going to get. Then you've got allowable building heights. So you have two story buildings on one end of the scale and eight story buildings on the other end of the scale. Or the complexity of permitting, you can have a lengthy permitting process with uncertain outcomes. That's uncertain outcomes for both the developer and for the city. So that's through conditions of approval negotiated through committee and commission meetings. And on the other end of the scale, you have streamlined permitting processes with predetermined outcomes where both the developer and the city know what you're getting ahead of time. And so we can put dials on each one of these factors. And depending on where we put the dials on the top factors, it affects how much housing the city can get. And we can dial these things down and inquire more parking with smaller buildings and more complex permitting processes, and that's going to lead to less housing. Or we can dial up some of them, leave some of them low, and you're going to end up with some sort of median amount of housing. Or we can crank all the dials all the way up to the top and get the most amount of housing. This Gateway Area Plan that's before you tonight, just for a preliminary review of the draft, is probably somewhere around here. It's moderately high. So it doesn't require the least amount of parking. So really progressive communities like Berkeley and San Francisco have parking maximums and they tell developers, you simply cannot build any more parking than this. You can put a little bit, but you can't, you can only do so much. This plan doesn't have parking minimums or maximums currently. So it's relatively moderate there. It does allow for eight story buildings in some limited parts of the total Gateway Area, others down to five stories. And most cases, unless a developer is willing to provide some extraordinary community amenities, it'd be pretty tough to reach an eight story building even where it's allowed. So it's really not at the, the full scale over there. And then the streamlining, streamlined permitting process could be far simpler. It, it has some things in there that really require developers to give a lot in order to get that streamlined process. And so it's a moderately high amount of housing that it produces, but it could be more. So that's the, that where, you know, I estimate the Gateway Area Plan is. But we have other priorities to balance. It's not just those three. There's permit fees, impact fees, utility connection fees, recreation, open space, affordable housing requirements, energy efficiency, green building requirements, architectural standards, and a lot of other priorities that kind of get balanced in here. So it really could look more like this with all of these dials. And the more dials you have, you start to establish a cap at which having a lot of priorities limits the total amount of housing potential you have. So just for instance, if this is our scale here and we dial, we change all the dials on all these different kinds of parameters and we want more housing, you can dial them all up. But at some point with that many priorities, you can only really produce so much housing. So that even if you turn all of them up, it's just not going to get you to the, the maximum amount of housing. There's only so much space to work with. So if you have open space requirements and parking requirements, they start to cumulatively limit the amount of housing you can have. So that if you have too many priorities above housing or even parallel with, with housing, then housing can't be your top priority. So question to ask, is housing a priority? Is it the priority? And it's perfectly okay if housing is not the city's priority. Let's just be honest with ourselves about it. And we definitely need to go into this agreeing that there are going to have to be other priorities in addition to housing. So what should those be? How many priorities? And how do we balance our interests? And that brings us to the Gateway Area Plan. So for those of you unfamiliar with the Gateway Area, this is looking south towards Arcata Bay. You can see Samoa Boulevard, K Street, Alliance kind of framing the, the Gateway Area. Creamery Building in the middle is the equivalent of 64 city blocks. If you haven't read the document yet, right behind the cover is this Gateway Area at a glance. And then pages one and two is what we call the people's summary. And it tries to take away all the planning jargon and all of the, you know, the, the mumbo jumbo of tech planning language and make it really straightforward of what the plan's attempting to accomplish. So if you only read three pages, that's a good place to start. And I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about the existing conditions of the Gateway Area. So there's this mini storage here, fine business. But I, I think it would be hard to argue that this is an especially efficient use of space. There is a lot of unused space there. You've got a barbed wire fence. This is on a prominent arterial in the middle of the city. And so is this the, the, the type of development that the city envisions into the future for this part of town? Or the Arcata Trailer Court? This is what we call affordable by design housing. It's not deed restricted affordable, but just as inherently more affordable than other types of housing. But could this be a better affordable housing project for the same residents? This is also very inefficient use of space. And so the total number of affordable housing units on this nearly full city block is really quite low relative to a different kind of affordable housing project. And so can the city envision something that has got a higher quality of affordable housing where the same tenants can upgrade, but still end up with the same, same rents that they're currently paying? This spot is about a 90 second walk from the Arcata Plaza. This is AmeriGas, another good business, but doesn't necessarily have any need to be in this part of town. And so over time, can the city envision a different use for this, what is also an entire city block? There's something about this picture that I, I find really appealing. I don't know why I like that photo so much, but this is also about 90 second walk from the Arcata Plaza. And so can the city envision something different on this spot? Even if the business stays in place, can this building be replaced with something that, that is, is different? Another mini storage that also takes up an entire city block, all four sides, all the way around, one full city block, the same size as the Arcata Plaza. And then this here with Wing Inflatables and a number of other really great businesses that could be relocated into buildings on this same property. And so it could be the whole property is redeveloped in phases so that existing businesses move from their current building into a new building on this property. And then everybody kind of rearranges, moves around, then they end up with modern state of the art industrial manufacturing buildings with retail or residential mixed use into them. Oakland is kind of leading the charge in California for light industrial mixed use zones. And so this has been done in a number of other places. And then there's the L Street Corridor. So 2010, I had the honor of being the deputy project manager for the Arcata Rail to Trail Project. I'm very familiar with the project. Really love it. It's where I taught my kids to ride their bikes, which, you know, my son was born that year. So I love the Rail to Trail Project, but clearly there's some room for improvement here and, you know, a little bit of love from the city needed on the L Street Corridor. Even here, this is two lanes in each direction with one lane of parking. If you've ever driven on this part, it's really nice as a pedestrian or bicyclist because it's so narrow, it's difficult for vehicles to get through. But vehicles often go into that vegetated strip trying to pass one another. And then on the southern end, you've got this, you know, drainage ditch that's full of blackberries and pampas grass. And so opportunity is there for cleanup and improvements as well. Some other existing conditions within the Gateway Area, some real treasures that need to be preserved. Some great businesses, some really wonderful legacy buildings. And so there are plenty of things in the Gateway Area that, that give a good skeleton to build upon. And some really charming homes and some modest smaller homes. There's a lot of residents that live in the Gateway Area that need to be honored as current residents. So existing context, city needs housing. I don't think that's disputable. The Gateway Area is optimally located for housing. It's in walking distance to the core downtown, to the high school, HSU, to the Marsh. Contains the Rail with Trail and is in with walking distances several open space areas. And it contains several prominent businesses and employers. And those factors make it a great location for housing. It's also optimally located for retail and more businesses than those that are currently there. Again, it's in walking distance to residential neighborhoods in every direction. It contains the Rail to Trail, making walking, biking to work, or just going to visit a business easier from residential parts of town. It's got the Creamery Building, Creamery District, Arcata Playhouse, all contained within the Gateway Area. And so it has capacity for more arts and culture businesses. Worth noting that the Creamery District is contained within the Gateway Area, but the Creamery District is substantially smaller. So we tried really hard in the development of the plan to honor the Creamery District and to try to promote it. So it doesn't override the Creamery District in any way. It merely contains it and tries to, to honor it. And I, I think it's clear that much of the Gateway Area could use a facelift. So that's another component of this context. And just to double down on this, the geography of the area, if you're more of a visual learner of understanding the Gateway Area, this outer dashed white line is a conservative 10 minute walk to the Gateway Area. And this inner dashed white line is a five minute walk to the Gateway Area. So this whole residential neighborhood here is, you know, five, 10 minute walk at most to the Gateway Area. Back 1,000 years ago in 2003, when I was at grad school at HSU, I lived right there and lived there for three years with no car and biked and walked to HSU, which is all the way on the right side of this figure every day. And so I'm familiar with this walk and, you know, it's, it's totally reasonable. A lot of people have said, hey, nobody walks anymore and everyone needs a car. I, I didn't for three years. That residential neighborhood is within a 10 minute walk, as is this one. And so is Arcata High School, which is really right on the edge. And the university is within a 10 minute walk of the Gateway Area. All of those red parcels there, that is the G Street Commercial Corridor and the downtown core around the plaza. So all of those commercial uses are right within walking distance of the Gateway Area. So even if the Gateway Area didn't produce any more businesses, if it produced more residences, all of those residents could walk to your existing businesses. You've got this residential neighborhood across the highway, which is within a 10 minute walk. And then this residential neighborhood down here, south of Samoa, as well as the Arcata Marsh. So it's really in the, the center of the action. And so all of those factors make it a great location for redevelopment. So you have some options. You can say, hey, we like L Street just the way it is. We don't want to see it change. You know, we prefer trailer parks over taller buildings, affordable housing style. I don't mean that facetiously. Some communities effectively choose that and say, this is really what we, we want. Typically more of a rural decision for rural counties, but the city is in the place where you can say, we really want more mini storage in the Gateway Area. That's totally an option in your zoning code and your general plan. Through the past several years of community meetings and watching all of those and participating in those, we think it's clear that the community has called for more housing. And so that's why the, the plan includes the plan includes uh more housing, but it's really up to council what you want to do and set the vision for this document. So uh bringing this thing home, uh there are seven guiding principles for the development of this plan and just the lightning round of what those are. It's housing, equity. Form-based development standards, which really focus on the appearance of buildings instead of the uses that are in them. So it doesn't micromanage uses to uh a more modern approach to zoning. Uh mixed uses and promoting all range of mixed uses. Uh some circulation improvements, the city investing in the circulation system to make everything else more feasible. Uh expanding, enhancing and honoring the arts and then sustainability. Those are the guiding principles in the development of the plan. And there's a an analysis in there I encourage you to look at on opportunity sites A through N and really look at those in detail and the development potential and how many housing units could be possible there. Um identifies four new zoning districts in the land use section, which has a number of policies and programs. The most important of which is the development of a new zoning code. Uh a community benefits program, uh which I think warrants a whole another conversation if you wanted to go into detail of that. There's a section on housing policies, a section on employment, section on arts and culture, and one on open space that goes into detail on a number of new open space parks and trails, uh including uh more than doubling the total amount of class-one trail in the Gateway Area. It's a really long section on mobility and talking about the city's investment to try to stimulate the other kinds of the uh development that you're seeking and the city's expectations for how the streetscape will look and work. Uh a section on design and architectural standards, which really informs the zoning code. A section on historical resources, uh and these buildings in red and blue and their status and and the level of protection that they will be afforded. Section on the city's investment in infrastructure. And then finally, a summary of the implementation. And so that is a just a rapid summary of the document and uh I'll pass it back to Director Boya.
All right. Thank you, Rob. Um I do want to do just a quick time check-in. Um I've probably got about another five-minute worth of presentation to walk the council through how a development uh project would be approved through the document. I know that's been of interest, folks, but I want to check in and make sure that um that's of interest now, or if you'd rather um you know, go into questions and then open for public comment.
The question I just wrote.
Oh yeah, we'd absolutely like to hear that. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Let me start from the beginning here. Okay, I'm gonna pause uh as I'm going through this uh document just to make sure that there aren't uh questions. So I'll pause at certain points, but feel free to jump in at any point. Um, okay, so the first big question is, what is the gateway plan and how does it work? So just to orient real quick, and this is a little bit of a duplication if you've already watched some of the other presentations, but Gateway Area Plan over on the right side of the page here is a element of the general plan. It'll be incorporated into the general plan, which is the policy document that establishes the policies, programs, and implementation measures to to implement that policy and that vision. It applies exclusively to the Gateway Area. There's a gateway zoning code that will uh further implement this gateway area plan. It'll take the vision that's expressed through policies and actually implement it in zoning code. That's to be developed at this point. We haven't started work on that because we need to make sure that the council and the community is on board and behind what the Gateway Area Plan says that we're trying to accomplish with it so that we can design a zoning ordinance that actually accomplishes those goals. So sometime over the course of the next couple of months, we'd like to get some indication that we're on the right track, you know, modify the gateway area plan as necessary, and then get direction to start um developing the code. Okay, so on page, the plan page forty-three, there's this figure. It explains the various new zoning districts that'll be adopted. There's the Gateway Barrel District to the far south, that sort of tanish area. That's uh proposed for highest density with tallest buildings. Uh there's the Gateway Corridor, which is envisioned as more of a commercial uh corridor area. You can see the proportion of s- uh Samoa Boulevard uh that extends to the east that's included in the area uh is mostly commercial. There's the Gateway Hub. This is the central area within the gateway that is farthest removed from other existing residential areas that has, you know, some higher uh development potential. And then the neighborhood, Gateway Neighborhood Zoning District, which is sort of a transition zone between existing residential areas primarily and this uh new zone. There's also natural resource areas that we'll designate within there. Those are the same as the other natural resource areas throughout the city. Table seven really outlines in the gateway plan um these land use designations, Gateway Barrel District, the Gateway Hub, Gateway Corridor, and Gateway Neighborhood, and what the maximum development potential would be for each of these different areas. So taking a look at the Gateway Barrel District, the area I said would have highest development potential, for example. You'll note that the building height and maximum stories is goes up to eight with a floor or a base tier of four. But there's a minimum building height of two. And to get to those higher elevations, you have to get into these community benefits bonus tiers. And I'll explain how that works in a minute, but the higher the bonus tier you go, the more community amenities that you need to provide. It's the way that it's structured. You can see in this table that with the Gateway Barrel District, these are options. All of these are options. So it would be up to the developer to come in and say, hey, I want to build a five-story building. Um and I'm gonna enter into community benefits bonus tier number one.
Can I ask a question, David?
Also has uh, yeah, please.
Um, how do we come up with the names for the districts?
Uh how do we come up with the names? The Barrel District was uh named as sort of an homage to the Cal Barrel Factory that was out in that area. The rest of them are just sort of descriptive terms. Um and they're all up for for grabs. If the council wants to rename them, by all means.
Okay. And then um where does the Creamery District fit in?
Where does the Creamery District fit in? Okay, good question. Let me back up a little bit here and look at the map. Creamery District uh overlaps a couple of these different uh areas. It is primarily in the Gateway Hub and the Gateway Corridor. Um Creamery District extends a little bit into the the uh Gateway Barrel District. Um because these properties here are included in the in the Creamery District. Um and so it encompasses about this area right here. So this wouldn't uh eliminate the Creamery District per se, but it would alter the zoning within it. The Creamery District is sort of a uh community-based um uh you know, vision that was implemented uh by the community. So um we're not proposing to change that piece of it, just the zoning.
Okay, so the Creamery District would have a couple of different, it would be the Creamery District, but then also the Hub District, Corridor District.
Yeah, um they wouldn't be the Gateway Barrel District, Gateway Corridor, Gateway Hub. Those are zoning designations. And the uh Creamery District would effectively be a neighborhood designation at that point.
Thanks.
That makes sense.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, great. So what we're proposing here is kind of the inverse of the uh you know, so uh of some other zoning codes. Instead of a maximum residential density and a minimum residential density, we only have a minimum residential density. Um the rationale for this is that it's really up to the developments, whether they want to have uh you know, three uh one bedrooms or one four-bedroom, uh depending on what the market is driving for. And we've had several developments developed throughout uh you know, my tenure at the city where it's clear that the developer is, you know, building a, you know, what they're calling a four-bedroom, but really what they're doing is building four studios that are connected to a ki- a kitchen. And so this gives a little bit more flexibility for a design that that meets what the market needs are. Um again, there's a building height minimum uh that's required. So if someone comes into community benefits bonus tier one, they can go to five stories. Uh but they uh don't have to build higher than two stories. The difference between community benefits tier one and base tier is that they would have a minimum residential density of twenty-seven. Okay, so moving on for another example to uh one of the other districts, uh let's take a look at the Gateway Hub. So this is the green area. Uh the greenish area that includes the majority of the Creamery District. Again, um this community benefits bonus tier four is not permitted. Um so you can't get into that tier. You can't build an eight-story building. You can't go to uh that community benefits bonus tier. You would only be able to go through one to three and a maximum building height of seven stories. So just looking at, you know, each of these community benefits bonus tiers, they tell you through the entire table what the minimums and maximums are related to development. And then you have to look to another table that is yet to be developed. It's outlined in concept in the Gateway Area Plan, how the community benefits program will work. But we haven't developed and fully fleshed out what the community benefits program will look like. But I'm gonna give you an example. Before we get to that, though, I just wanted to reiterate visually, in the Gateway Barrel District, eight stories would be maximum. Hub, seven stories, the corridor, six, and neighborhood, five. Each of those coming with different community amenities that would be required, you know, in different priority policy areas. Now, we did go to the committees in July and asked them to weigh in on, you know, a list of uh community amenities that should be included in this. One of the next steps that we need to do after we've gone through this public vetting process is also to verify, you know, with the development community that um these developments are still um you know, possible with those uh requirements. And again, the community amenities uh are are similar to uh what we typically find in conditions of approval. So one of the implementation pl- uh measures in this plan is to create the community benefits program. Again, once the council's directed staff, okay, we've got a gateway area plan, we've got the, you know, parameters that we're gonna design this zoning code around. We will then start working on implementation GA two-point-one to create a community bene- benefits program. We've played a little bit with some concepts so that we understand how it would work, though, and so I'll share this with you. If you go through the one-hour video that's posted on our SERP webpage right now, you'll be able to get a little bit more detail on this. But essentially, a table X that will be developed into the zoning code will tell you how many points you need to acquire to get to community benefit bonus track one, two, three, or four. Once you know how many bonus points you need to achieve, you would go to a new table. Let's call it table Y. And these would be in those various different categories following along the um, you know, the priority policy areas. And you'd be able to select from amongst the various um options within here uh to add points. And so in the housing ca- creation amenities, for example, you would have a max, you'd be able to generate a maximum of five points if you selected items from here. And you get different options, for example, owner-occupied housing. Uh if you create owner occupancy, condo these projects out, you're willing to sell them, you get some bonus points for that so that people can have ownership opportunities in Arcata. Uh small units, affordable by design, uh preservation of affordable housing. Uh if you want to do large housing units, so you have housing for families. So all of these would be options that you could select as a community amenity that you would put into your application when you come to the building counter with your designs to show that you've met the objectives of this plan. So you would look at table X, find out how many points you need to gather. You'd look at table Y, you would select from amongst the different policy areas, housing, affordable, um sustainable uh communities, um you know, energy efficiency, open space, et cetera. And build an application that, you know, met those objectives. You would also be subject to a form-based code. Well, what is that? We've been talking about form-based code for quite some time. Um I pulled these images off formbasecodes.org. It's a really nice, simple image to explain conventional zoning, on the one hand, which is basically what our land use code is. Tells you things like, you know, the density, the floor ratio, setbacks, parking. It kind of has this halo around the properties. And then each project that comes in needs to go through a one-off design review or a one-off approval process. We need to say, decide, you know, is this an appropriate use? We've got all our different uh land use categories. And each project requires a lot of review and it's um, there are some areas of it that are somewhat subjective. The next step towards a form-based code says, hey, look, we're still gonna regulate in that same way. Every project is gonna come forward and go through a planning process, but we're gonna give some design guidelines. Um the city of Arcata has approached this with its design element, but we haven't developed, well-developed design guidelines. Design guidelines are nice because then you tell the community and the developer, this is what we want our streetscapes to look like. Form-based codes go a little bit farther and they go through and provide you with bulk, scale, mass uh design elements. They really convey what the uh community's desire is in terms of uh, you know, its uh built environments relationship to the community. We're doing this right now uh as a community design process. And so part of what we're engaged in right now is trying to assess, you know, bulking and massing. You know, a lot of people are concerned about having any story buildings anywhere in the city of Arcata. Totally understand that. So that's a community conversation right now. Um as Rob was talking about earlier, to the extent that we have smaller buildings, we either have fewer units or we have less of some of these other things like open space and trails and stuff like that. So we need to balance those ideas and adopt a form-based code that really reflects our design aesthetic and what the city of Arcata wants to see. So once you've gone through that community design process, there's community certainty, there's certainty amongst the developers. You've developed a comprehensive plan. And as long as you meet those community uh amenities through that um uh, you know, through our program and you meet the design criteria, then you would have project permit streamlining. It would basically be a building permit. You'd meet the form-based code, provide the community amenities, streamline planning process, and we would get these mixed-use, mixed-income, uh mixed-tenure uh projects that that um, you know, contribute to the community in many different ways. This is a image out of the document. It's just an idea of what these buildings could look like. It's not intended to reference what any specific building would look like. But if you imagine for a second that the, you know, the community settled on this set of images and said, we want all of our buildings. This is an extreme example of a form-based code, but we want all of our buildings to look like one of these buildings here. We would know for absolute certain what every single building was gonna look like from here on out. I doubt we're gonna end up being that prescriptive, but we will have a good understanding of uh you know, how the buildings are gonna interact with the with the public sphere to ensure that there's pedestrian-oriented design, that there is human-scale design to make sure that we can, you know, meet these high-density requirements and still have this be a high-quality livable place. Okay, but the big question comes up, what if I don't meet the form-based code requirements? So that a lot of people concern that, well, I don't have the money to build a eight-story building. What if I just want to put on an A D U? Well, there's two options. There's Planning Commission ru- review with exceptions. So you want to build an A D U funky little house in the back of your house? That would be an exception to this rule. If you have a single-family home, you want to build an A D U, you could do that. If you wanted to build some strange obscurity with uh uh container, shipping containers, and that wasn't in uh accordance with the design guidelines, you would go to Planning Commission and the Planning Commission would say, hey, do we really think this meets the objectives of the gateway plan? Can we make the findings? And it would be just like the planning processes now and today. And so the plan will ultimately provide for some streamlining as long as you comport with the plan. But it also offers the decision-makers, the city council, the Planning Commission, the community options to bring something forward that's not in the plan. So just summarizing, really, the goal of this plan is to, you know, honor the community's values. The general plan lays out the community vision. It's still really fresh. We're updating that vision as we go through the process over the next year. And we've really honed in on a vision for the Gateway Area uh that protects the bottom lands, the forest hill slopes, and the bay that we surround us. Uh the idea is to leverage what we've learned about uh vitality of having a a plaza, having a community gathering space, a large community gathering space with lots of mixed uses, high-density retail and and places to live. And ultimately, to bring forward, you know, the recreational business, cultural and open space that really builds this community in the end and is driven by this community. So again, um I just want to re- reiterate to folks that, you know, we are willing to do stakeholder meetings. Uh if you want to reach out to us and and you're concerned about the uh plan, or you are uh excited about the plan, or you just want to know more. Um you know, staff is is here. We're gonna do a number of different uh engagements over the course of the next couple of months to make sure that there's ample opportunity. to make sure that there's ample opportunity for folks to get engaged. We're going to do that in a number of different ways, including some in-person tabling at Farber's Market. We'll come to your Rotary, we'll be scheduling an in-person sort of walkthrough of the plan as we can in January. And we're looking forward to further engagement. Thank you so much for letting me go through that, that was a few more minutes than five and I apologize for my, my estimate being so far off.
All right, let's jump in with questions because I know we've got lots of them.
Yeah, I'm looking at packet page 76 and it talks about the Gateway Area Plan Outreach to date. And I count over 32 or probably exactly 32 opportunities listed over the last year for the community to provide input. And I think that's great. And I'm just wondering, what do you feel like is your sense, we talked about, you know, how this plan is going to reflect, reflect community values? And overall, the input we've received, what do you feel like your sense is the community values are over building height? Because it seems like it's the most controversial issue that I'm getting right now from constituents.
You know, the majority of that community input, I mean, we have, you know, dating back to the very beginning, we have more than 900 survey responses where people were shown buildings similar to the buildings that I just showed you in this presentation. And, you know, and then smaller buildings. And we said to them, you know, can you tell us which one you prefer? And the vast majority slid the scale all the way up to, and it was a sliding scale, you know, you could go in the middle or you can go all the way up to the top. The vast majority of folks slid all the way up to the top and were ready to accept, you know, fairly large stature buildings. I think that, you know, we'll need to continue to, you know, to dig into that now that we have the actual plan in front of us with what the proposals are. But it's also, you know, true that the, you know, the council can say, hey, look, you know, we're just, you know, the community's not ready. We're not ready to say eight stories is allowable within the Arcata boundaries right now. Let's, you know, chop off a floor or two. It's totally up to the council to make those, those determinations. And we hope to, now that we have the document, be able to bring forward, you know, a broad sector of the community to, to give input on those ideas.
Did you say the community, from what you saw, that there was information showing that they wanted up to eight story buildings?
Yeah, I could point you to.
Perfect.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Yeah, no, that's good, I was going to ask where I could find that.
Yeah, I can point you to the outreach plan that we did for the housing element. And I can share that with the council, that's actually up on our website right now, but I can bring that back. And in that engagement was the one in particular where we had sort of a sliding scale and showed, you know, I don't remember if it was an eight story building or not, but, you know, massive multifamily buildings on the one end and smaller, you know, standard, you know, two-story apartments on the other end. But again, you know, this is, the rubber's at the road now, we have the, we have the plan in front of us, so this is, now's the time to really weigh in on this.
Right, yeah, I mean, I feel like that really deserves kind of its own conversation is what, how tall we want to go in the city. You know, I know four stories is our limit. We also look at the Plaza and Jacobi Storehouse, you know, as you pointed out to me, is about five stories. And we don't really hear any complaints about the Jacobi Storehouse being five stories. But yeah, you know, really trying to gauge that sense in the community on what building heights are comfortable with. Another question I had is the size of the Gateway Area Plan, the area it covers. The draft Gateway Area Plan encompasses 138 acres of land. But the certified housing element, implementation measure 20 specifies a total of 87.64 acres. And I'm wondering how the acreage increased from 87 acres to 138.
Yeah, that's a really good question. You know, the boundaries that we put around the target opportunity zones in the housing element weren't well vetted. They were, you know, done with, you know, modest, you know, planning research. And ultimately, when we, you know, thought in a little bit more detail through the proposed Gateway Area Plan boundaries, it made sense to subsume some of the area that was identified in the housing element as the downtown upzoning into the gateway area. So we took, we subtracted from one opportunity zone and added to the other. There have been some other minor tweaks as we thought through, you know, where the boundary should fall. You know, depending on opportunity and, and, you know, conflict that might result as, as a result of the plan. So it's, and the, and the boundary frankly is still flexible. I mean, that, the commitment in the housing element was really around, you know, creating an upzoned area that allowed us to meet our housing element. And this is a much larger, more ambitious objective than just meeting this current cycle housing element. But it still does accomplish those goals.
Thank you. And I know you've talked about how we need to identify a stable project description before we do environmental analysis on the project. And I was wondering if for the public, you could talk a little more about the stable project description, what that means.
Sure. The project description that you evaluate under SEQA needs to be a specific project. If it changes along the way while you're doing your analysis, then then you have to go back and reevaluate each new piece of the project description. And it leads to confusion if you have to keep changing the project description. And so usually what you do is you wait until you know what the project is. You have a quote unquote, stable project description. And then you start doing the SEQA analysis. It's not that, that, you know, something in the analysis might, might make a change if you have to. But what we're trying to do at this point, this early engagement process is to really hone in on what does the gateway plan, which is the overarching policy document for this area, what should that reflect? You know, back to your question about eight stories, maybe it should be seven, maybe it should be six max. We need to go through that community conversation. Once we settle on that, we can develop the zoning code. Zoning code will give a lot more detail about the potential impacts of, you know, environmental impacts of the Gateway Area Plan. And then we'll take that along with all the updates to the general plan that we'll be working through over the course of the next year. And analyze that in one SEQA document. So all of that has to be stable, we have to know what it is that we're evaluating before we start on that environmental work.
Great, thank you. Have there been, at one point, do we start talking about providing fire and police services to the, to that area if it, you know, goes into, yeah, starts, you know, developing into dense housing?
Yeah, that's a really good question. You know, growth at some point will trigger the need for new fire services, new police services, new wastewater treatment, new water, water services. And so all of those are really evaluated in depth in that environmental document, once we have the stable project description. That's not to say that we're not engaging, you know, service providers now. When we released the document, we reached out to PG&E, we reached out to the fire department, we reached out to pretty much all the service providers and a couple of folks have, have reached out early and said, yeah, we want to start looking at this now. Ultimately, as we get into the next step where we're releasing the, the EIR for this work, that'll again go out to all of the partner agencies, all the resource agencies, all the service providers. And they'll be able to comment and weigh in. And it could be that, you know, let's say the fire, fire department for instance says, well, you know, we can service, you know, buildings up to four stories, but if you go beyond that, you'd need a new ladder truck. So then we have a threshold, we have a new mitigation measure that says when a building is built that, you know, you know, hits that threshold, then we need to buy a new ladder truck. I'm super simplifying this, but you know, there's, that's sort of what the job in the environmental document will be is to outline what the mitigation program should be for this, for this development plan. And we'll do that with all those providers. PG&E may need to upgrade substations. And so then, you know, there'll be fair share contributions to those, there'll be, you know, city, you know, you know, grant applications for, for some of those infrastructure improvements. And there'll be contributions from, from other areas as well.
Thanks, yeah, and on the concept of population, excuse me, growth, you know, I know in some other documents, we've talked about planned population increase percentage wise per year. And I'm just, you know, wondering what we're thinking right now with that, with this new development and also taking into consideration the polytechnic plans and expanding the university. And, you know, I guess more to the point is, will our wastewater treatment plant be able to support all this development? You know, if so, how, you know, how much is that going to cost? My understanding is that right now, you know, we have the capacity of about 20,000 residents.
Yeah, we, I, you know, I'm not prepared to answer that question in detail at this point. A lot of that will be fleshed out through the environmental review and the additional analysis that we'll be doing for the general plan updates. What I will say is that there's a little bit of a disconnect between the theoretical total maximum build out. You know, where we've cited that it could potentially have 3,500 units and what the actual design build out for a planning period will be. So there's going to be, you know, much less actual built over the 20-year plan period for this plan than 3,500 units. I, I can say that with certainty, that would just be an incredible population growth. And what we will do ultimately is to, when we develop our population estimates, we'll identify those with, you know, you know, all of the planned upzones or rezones throughout the city and identify within that environmental document what the new population threshold will be. And essentially what will happen is if you get up to that population threshold, then you're actually building out beyond that. Then you have to do more environmental analysis and identify those new mitigation measures that will be associated with it. So the wastewater treatment plant cannot handle all of the development that could potentially occur within this area as it's currently proposed. We're not expecting to get the full build out. And the environmental document will identify all those other questions that you answered, how much is it going to cost? You know, how much capacity do we need, where should it be located, all of those ideas.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that seems like it'd be a really important question to be answered before we start, you know, significantly increasing the population to make sure we can provide services. And I know, you know, we've talked about our current plan is, you know, maybe like a 50-year plan for the wastewater treatment plant. And it seems like, you know, this project could take 10 to 20 years maybe to build out, leaving only maybe 30-year lifespan on the treatment plant. And I know we've talked about this in the past, there's really nowhere else to move the plant to. So yeah, it just seems like something we need to seriously consider as we're talking about increased growth and development in the city. There's been, a few people have commented that they felt like they didn't have easy access to hard copies of the draft. And I'm wondering if there's anything else we can do to increase the access to hard copies?
Yeah, we have a copy at City Hall that folks can come and take a look at. And there's a copy in the library that folks can go and look at there. In addition, DLO is working to get several copies available for lending at the library. I'm not exactly sure where that's at, but I can report back to the council, but the idea is that you could go and borrow a copy. In addition, Bug Press has the electronic version, if one wanted to purchase a copy of that, they could. They're, they're pretty costly though, it's about almost a hundred dollars per, per copy. We're also working on trying to create a black and white version, there are some, some images that would, you know, wouldn't be viewable in black and white, so some pages will have to be color, but that could reduce the cost, so if people really want a copy of their own, they could print it on, you know, their own printer or they could go to Bug Press and get the, you know, black and white color mixed version, that'll be a little cheaper. So we're trying to do what we can to get, you know, physical copies out into the community. But certainly folks can come to City Hall and, and look at our copies anytime.
Okay, thank you. And what are, what are we doing to seek input from diverse communities and people that don't have internet access? I guess hard copies kind of answers the internet access one.
Yeah, in addition, we're trying to create ways to, you know, to meet in public in small groups that's COVID safe. You know, again, I've offered to meet with folks in, you know, stakeholder meetings if they've got an organization or a group of neighbors and they want to, you know, ask questions or get a presentation or whatever it is that they're interested in doing, we're happy to do that. And we're evaluating some other opportunities for in-person meetings, including some tabling coming up in the spring and summer. You know, Farber's Market and, and, you know, co-op and, you know, other places. Similar to what we did with the housing element where we, you know, generated quite a lot of input and interest. In addition, we're, you know, presenting to HSU, we'll work with the, you know, the colleges there as well as the, you know, the, the clubs and make presentations there. And, you know, we've, you know, I, I get that, you know, Zoom doesn't work for, for everyone. And so we're also evaluating, you know, other ways to, you know, get the message out that is more in person. And so we'll develop all that and be releasing that. I encourage people to stay tuned to the SERP webpage that I mentioned earlier to, to get updates on that or sign up for our e-notifications.
Thank you. And I know we have a online community vision survey right now and I was just wondering if we could consider extending the end date of that to increase opportunities for public input?
Yeah, absolutely. DLO and I were talking about this just today and she was suggesting the same thing and I, I fully support it. I mean, if, if nothing else, it's getting people interested in the planning process and, and giving them an opportunity to, to weigh in. We are putting together the results from the survey work that we've gathered so far and we'll be bringing that to council shortly. It wasn't, wasn't ready for this presentation, but I, I look forward to sharing that. We'll also be preparing, you know, additional surveys that hone in a little bit more on the objectives of the Gateway Area Plan and try, you know, try and get those out to the community. And then recently, we got a request to make these surveys available in hard copy for folks that, again, don't have access to computers. So we're working on a program for that as well.
Great, I just have maybe two or three more questions. There are visuals for the plan that have been available during the outreach process and I guess they consist of three and four story buildings and the visuals. As we're talking about larger buildings, maybe it would make sense to include visuals with taller buildings. What do you think?
I'm not sure I followed that question.
When the, you know, in the visual examples, we're providing the public for what the project could look like, what the project area could look like. The building sizes that are being displayed. It's okay, we can move on to the question.
Or smaller.
And then, is there current heavy industrial use in the area?
There is, yeah, there's a Sawville on the Winkle Floyd Business Park that would be considered heavy industrial. That's the only thing that comes to mind.
Okay. And then when we talk about some of these uses and encouraging businesses to relocate, you know, the first question comes to mind is some of these businesses can take a large footprint and where would they move to? We just, you know, we don't have a lot of space left in the city. And, and we also refer to that some of the business uses would be allowed for a, you know, quote, period of time. And what do we mean by that when we say a period of time?
Yeah, so again, I want to reiterate, this plan doesn't require anyone to move. Any use that is identified in the plan as, you know, not allowed in the zoning district, that means for future uses. So if, for instance, the zoning code says, you know, mini storage is not allowed, that doesn't mean that mini storages that are in the area right now have to close down and go somewhere else. That means that you couldn't open a new mini storage. Now, if the mini storage wants to continue to operate and they want to pass that on to, you know, their, their children, their children want to pass that on to their children and continue to operate mini storage, the plan will allow them to do that. If the mini storage is, let's say it's a business that is owned by an individual, but the underlying land is owned by someone else. And that someone else, that property owner says, hey, you know, I'm, I'm thinking about taking advantage of this plan and, you know, building a, you know, multi-story building. And, you know, I'm going to need you to, to think about going somewhere else. Well, that's where, you know, the city's relocation program, you know, would, would come into play. We would be looking to secure grant funds to help those businesses relocate within the city of Arcata's limits. I don't know all the, you know, you know, possible scenarios. It's, it, it would be a vain effort, I think, to try and, you know, game theory every single possibility. In particular, because if you look at the In particular, because if you look at the, the opportunity sites, that reflects, the opportunity sites reflect something like two-thirds of the total maximum potential developable area. And so you have some sites that are going to be really readily developable. You have other sites that are going to be less so, that are going to take, you know, relocating a business or, you know, moving significant infrastructure or, you know, have a relocation of residents. Those are like, less likely to, you know, occur more rapidly. And so, you know, I think the, the message is that the city wants to, as it has in the past, continue to support existing Arcata businesses. And, you know, if that means helping them, you know, relocate within the community, we will continue to do that. But also to continue to facilitate and, you know, improve on the district and, and, you know, allow for new investment and new development.
Thank you. And then I guess maybe this is, I think my last question, maybe it's for Nancy. You know, if we decide down the road that, you know, housing is our top priority, we really want this area to be housing and developed for that and eminent domain comes into the picture, how does that work? Do we, does eminent domain, does the property belong to the city and we transfer it to a developer? Does it immediately go to a developer? How does that play out?
You want me to answer this, David?
Yeah, that'd be great if you worked on the detail, but I will say we're updating the frequently asked question. This has come up as a concern. There's absolutely nothing in this plan that suggests or requires eminent domain.
Yeah, and, and it's really hard for me to speak in, in such high-level abstract. Eminent domain is the power the city holds for specified public purposes. And you're, you're posing the question as if the property would be immediately transferred to the developer. I'm not sure I understand that as a, in, as a reality that I can address right now. Can you be more specific in your question?
Yeah, I guess just, you know, yeah, how does it work? You know, if we decide that we want this area for housing and it's an industrial use and we, you know, have the authority to take the property because we feel like it's in the public good and the best interest of the public, does it become city property and then we sell it to a developer? How does the property become, you know, go from industrial use to being developable?
Well, going from industrial use to being developable through the eminent domain process is, is not, I mean, that's not the only route. There are many ways and that's what this whole plan is about, is to evaluate other ways to change the zoning.
Sure. Yeah, and I just mean, you know, specifically, the, you know, the property owner doesn't want to sell, but the city decides, you know, for a great example is that mobile home park that he showed pictures of. You know, the council decides that the better use is for high-density housing and the council chooses to go that route. You know, how does that work?
So as David has said several times, the property owners are not going to be required to do any of this. If the city decides that it ever wants to acquire an interest through eminent domain, there's a very long process that has to play out through the courts. There's an appraisal process. The money has to be deposited in court. It has to be approved. You know, it's a long process. It's not just the city sweeping in and taking the property. The property owner is paid just compensation based on the appraised value. So I-
So then it becomes property of the city?
And then it becomes property of the city.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I think the more important piece to that question though is that the, yeah, I mean, you know, the city has the power of eminent domain. It just does. And I don't know of any time in the city's history when it's exercised the power of eminent domain. And the city council would have to find that the, there was such a desperate need. I mean, that would be a pretty dire straits, that if we had just gone through and rezoned 130 acres of property so that you could, so the private market could decide whenever it decides to go ahead and create housing based on a market need. And then the city finds that, you know, that there's a greater market need than the, the private market is creating. I mean, it's just, it, it doesn't make sense that, there's no logical connection there. I mean, I think that some of the concerns that I've heard from folks is, hey, you know, you've shown me this map and it shows a trail going across my property. Are you taking that property?
Yeah, no, I totally understand what you're saying and I don't think we're to do that. I just, like you said, you're going to add it to your list of frequently asked questions. I know it's been, you know, brought up by community members. And I think, you know, the only example I can think of, I think there was like a drug house that, you know, we couldn't get people to, to get out of and the owner wasn't cooperating. And I believe we did use eminent domain to transfer it to another owner. But thank you, I really appreciate it. You answered all my questions.
Hi, thank you, Councilmember Watson. I think you answered, I think you asked questions that a lot of us had, so I appreciate that. One question I wanted to ask, especially in light of the climate action plan presentation we had previous, you didn't speak in this presentation to any of the traffic patterns that are going to be happening around the Gateway Area. And I'd really like you to go and talk about that a little if you're able to.
Yeah, I actually have a whole section of a presentation on some of the updates to the transportation and circulation. And, you know, I think that whole topic warrants a separate stakeholder meeting and so we're trying to plan for one of those. But super high level, let's see, I can pull up an image just to make it a little more comprehensive, comprehensible. At super high level, the, the plan is to, to add to the road network and with the primary objective of adding to this road network is to create better bicycle and pedestrian transit. And so, let's see if I can show you an image of what this looks like. Okay, so here's super high level, open space and, and new trans, non-motorized transportation trails and whatnot that are planned for the area. So I'll just cover this real quick. So the idea is to create some linear features, some restoration areas and publicly, publicly accessible, you know, space within certain areas so that there's recreational opportunity where currently the city doesn't own any property. And then with the trails, the concept is to, you know, leverage the, you know, the rail. So N Street has railroad on it. We could turn that into a trail. Q Street could be extended to a trail network. There could be a trail through this Barrel District that links our existing L Street. L Street would have to be reconfigured and I'll show you why in just a moment. But that could be reconfigured to follow along roughly the same pattern and get you the same kinds of transit. And then increase opportunity to connect between N and O Street through connections here. Additional bikeways would be created. So we've got some, you know, class two bike trails, but we extend those on Ninth and Eighth and N. Extend them on K Street. And then here's kind of an interesting concept and, and again, an area where the city doesn't own the extension of Sixth Street on this area. This is privately owned, but we're planning for, you know, having one of these wunners. So vehicles could drive on it, but you might expect to find, you know, a person walking right in the middle of the street because they're designed to be, you know, all mode transport streets. And so this is just sort of a, another sort of concept here. Zooming through a few of these where we get into detail, that's just zooming in again so you can see a little closer what those areas would look like. Now, those are the non-motorized sections. But looking at, you know, what we're posing for vehicular traffic and, and what the street skates would actually look like. Right now in white, you have northbound G, southbound H. Those are both two-way, two-lane streets with two rows of parking on either side. One row on either side rather, and then sidewalks on either side. You have the Eighth and Ninth Street couplets, again, one-way, one-lane, one-sided parking and sidewalks on both sides. The idea would be to extend the Ninth Street and Eighth Street one-way couplet, rounding it in. So that would turn into a complete couplet. And then transforming K Street from, you know, one lane each way or two-lane road with parking on either side to a one-way, one-lane with parking and separated bike trail, which would be really nice if you ride your bike on K Street now, you know, it's a little, it's probably the most herring charrow that you can ride on. In order to do this, we would need to come up with a one-way couplet southbound on L Street. Right now, L Street from, you know, about Sixth Street South is owned by North Coast Rail Authority. There's segments of L Street that the city has access to, but there'd be some acquisitions necessary in this area to complete this vision. L Street would though, stay pretty much as it is. Here's an example of what K Street would look like. Zooming in a little bit, there's one-way northbound on K Street. There'd be enhanced crosswalks and bulbouts for crossing, which make crossing safer since you're crossing a shorter distance. And a segregated bike trail. It's not completely segregated. There could be some curbs or some other structures put in here or paddles to help identify that this is a separate lane, but it's mostly paint at this point. So that'll be an item for public discussion. Rob is pointing out to me that their traffic engineer said that transforming K Street from a one-way or from a two-way to a one-way and Eighth Street from two-way to one-way would transform the points of interaction at any intersection crossing from 32 potential conflicts with cars v. peds to four. And so these are inherently safer crossing designs. You can see there's still parking on the one side. L Street, again, would expand to include a one-way. Let's flip this over and look at it so that we're looking southbound. Right now, there's a landscaping buffer. There's the last one trail. Another vegetative buffer, vehicle lane and vehicle parking is what would be proposed with a sidewalk on the side. So what that would look like, you'd have the landscaping buffer, keep the rail with trail. Have the vegetative buffer to separate it, vehicular lane, a parking lane and then a sidewalk. And then lastly, zooming in on the design for Eighth and Ninth Street, not going to go into detail on these, but Eighth and Ninth Street become a one-way, again, enhanced crossings with wider sidewalks, some angle-in parking, some parallel parking with the bike trail that circles all the way around, allows you to ride in that separated lane with, you know, fewer points of contact at all of these intersections. So we can, you know, certainly do a full presentation on, on the transportation proposal to the council or, you know, have a study session that, you know, includes maybe the planning commission, the community and we can dig into a little bit more detail about these proposals for, you know, the road network.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Mr. Loia.
I kind of wanted to ask a related question to that. So are there any plans or, I mean, maybe this is too far out and generally speaking, but to increase connectivity with transit and what would that look like? Especially, I was just kind of thinking on like, you know, that 11th Street corridor as well. I mean, enhancing obviously bike transportation between that district and HSU. And then also, I mean, just thinking more about, yeah, bus service or even future of other forms of public transit to, you know, we're, we're talking about walking and the biking, but there's some people that might not be able to access that. So how are we, you know, planning on increasing that transit connectivity?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I'll, I'll lean on Nature to answer a little bit of this. Nature, do you want to kick it off?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers and the members of staff and the public. Yes, definitely. It's not a detail out currently how the transit would work, but our goal is to have increased the transit in that area. In future, in next five years, we plan to add a new route. We call it a green route and we'll see how that works and that will be going through that area.
And in addition, I would just add that, you know, the, the plan really is aspirational about alternative transportation in many different measures. You know, we'd like to, you know, see car share come into the area. We'd like to see, you know, bus, bus passes be offered with the, you know, bundled with the, the housing units instead of having parking spaces bundled with the housing units. We successfully implemented that program on the Sorrel Place. And so that way, you know, you're generating supply. You know, there's always this supply-demand chicken and egg by doing programs like that where maybe this bus is, you know, for the first two years, it's just running around, you know, mostly empty. But when people start to catch on that, you know, hey, we actually have some pretty decent headways and I could jump on that bus and get to where I want to go and I don't have to take a car, people will find that convenient and they'll start using it. But the plan also recognizes, I think some people have seen these, you know, aspirational goals to increase alternative transportation, biking and petting as, you know, cutting them out of the picture. You know, they are in a condition or, you know, a situation where, you know, they rely on a car. And this is true of many families that they just have to have a car. The plan doesn't require no parking. The plan provides for parking. And I think there's still in the near term going to be a demand for parking. The objective of the plan is to try and incentivize other versions of, of modalities as well. So yeah, I definitely think that, you know, well, a lot of the transit planning is very flexible too. So as population grows, as this plan gets implemented, as we have more people here with the polytechnic, there's going to be a higher demand for busing and then we'll get, you know, more routes, more locations.
Awesome. Thank you. And I guess I'm not going to ask a question about all of these things because Councilmember Watson asked a lot of questions and I know we're going to, you know, keep this process going, but I did just kind of want to share, I guess, some of the things that I have been hearing. And that, you know, we've all probably engaged with different people and some of the same people. But just kind of like some of the main concerns that I've heard are, yes, building height, infrastructure and services, fire, police. I was, schools, thinking about schools. I mean, if we're having families come in this area, growing that, how is that going to impact our school systems? And then of course, the outreach process has been a big question for people. And then this idea of acquisition of property and, and Councilmember Watson brought up eminent domain. And I, I just hope that we can keep, you know, saying to people that that is not included in this plan. And I, you know, I personally think that that is crossing a, of, an interesting line. And to just make sure that people know that we're not going to come in and take away your property and put an eight-story building on it because I think a lot of people think that that is a concern and, you know, that is not in my interest and I hope it's not in the city's interest and I honestly hope it's not in, you know, a lot of people's interest because I mean, that seems like a very intense process to undergo. And then also ensuring that there's, you know, varied housing and that, you know, we are ensuring that we might be, you know, in this area able to provide services to obviously low-income housing, perhaps even housing for our homeless individuals in our community. And also being able to provide some, you know, level of, of service in this area. And so the one question I, I will ask that does kind of have to do with all of that stuff is, and probably relates to a lot of what we've been getting, but how were stakeholders targeted in the initial outreach? And how will they be targeted going forward? Because I feel like I've gotten a lot of feedback that people have a lot of, a lack of trust in the process that's been happening. And, you know, I, as a public official, that makes me very, I don't know, bummed out that, you know, our, our citizens can't trust our process and trust our government, which is, which is unfortunate. And so, you know, being able to bring this, you know, out and have everybody involved and hopefully, you know, and you spoke on it already a bit, but having, you know, some hopefully in-person events for people that have difficulty accessing Zoom and this kind of format. And so basically, you know, going forward, how are we going to target stakeholders for engaging on this?
Yeah, thank you for that question. Because I, I think it's important that everyone in the community has an opportunity to participate and is able to, you know, voice their concerns and contribute to the plan. And so, you know, we, you know, the part of the reason why I spent so much time in the written staff report and identifying the public outreach to date and identifying, you know, the, you know, strategies that we used previously to garner, you know, community input was because I've also heard this, that people are concerned that, you know, that they're late to the party. I want to really reiterate, no one is late to the party. It's just getting started. I want to really reiterate, no one is late to the party. It's just getting started. This is the beginning, this is, I guess, the beginning middle, if you will, of the process. There are lots of different documents that are happening. And I really do attribute this to the fact that, you know, when somebody, you know, maybe sees something in the paper or hears something on Facebook about some esoteric meeting that the city council is having or the planning commission is having, staff are holding some stakeholder meeting. You see a staff member sitting at a table at a farmer's market, and you walk right by them because there's nothing really interesting that you see there. But then you hear about some proposal of a development that's happening in your neighborhood, then all of a sudden it gets real. And you wonder, well, why didn't I hear about this? It's not very satisfactory to say, well, that staff member was sitting at the, you know, sitting at the table in the farmer's market, you walked right by them, and, you know, that was an opportunity to engage early. But the main point is, no one is late. You got noticed. So when the, when the draft, before the draft was released, I sent a letter to every property owner and resident inside the district that's affected here. When, after the draft was released and we were getting ready to do the, you know, the engagement, I sent another letter to all the property owners and all the residents. Now, I've already talked to at least one person who said, hey, I didn't get that letter. And, you know, it's, it's not a complete system, even though we have a list of addresses, it's not a complete system. In addition to sending direct mailings to people whose properties or residences or businesses may be affected because we sent to those addresses in the district, we've also been, for quite some time now, working really hard to promote our e-notifications. I don't know exactly how many people we have signed up now, but last I looked, it was well over fifty. E-notifications is the best way to get informed directly when we're having, you know, releasing information about the plan, when we're having events, when we're having meetings with the council, the planning commission. And so sign up for e-notifications. It's a great way to get information. We've also blasted this out on our social media channels. We've had public service announcements that have gone out in the papers. We've had interviews with newspapers to, you know, generally spread the word. We'll continue these efforts, and again, I'm open to suggestions. But at the end of the day, there are still going to be people who are finding out, you know, over the course of the next several months that this is going on. And we want them to come in and participate. As I've mentioned before, we'll go out and do, you know, stakeholder meetings with your group. And so if you're listening tonight, invite me to your group, and I'm happy to come and speak with you. You know, one of my staff will. We've been doing walking tours that were well-attended, and, you know, folks seem to be spreading the word. And there's a natural network of folks going, going out and spreading the word. And then lastly, when, when the plan was released, I, you know, gathered the various networks that I have, and, you know, email addresses for folks in various networks I'm involved in, including the community landscape that we developed through the housing element process. And, you know, I sent out personal invites to engage to five hundred of my closest friends. So we're doing all kinds of efforts to try and engage people. We're doing efforts that have a high impact. I've had a recommendation, for example, to send out a, you know, a notice in the water billing. You know, it sounds simple, just send out a notice on the water billing. Well, doing that one time costs around five hundred dollars, and we've demonstrated through, you know, our survey work that we've done previously, that it's not the most effective way to get information to people anyway. In addition, not everybody gets a water bill. So many people do their water bill online. And so, you know, so we are open to suggestions, but not, we're not going to do everything. We're only going to do the most, most effective means of trying to get the word out. I guess I'll stop there. But yeah, we're very serious about trying to engage people, and I understand, you know, folks feel like they came, you know, got, got late information. And I just want to really reiterate, it's not late. Let's focus on what you think about the plan now and move on from, you know, hey, you got, got, got me late to the party. We're at the party.
Thank you, David. And yeah, I'll let everybody else ask questions.
Well, I, I think that this is the nice part about being a council is that you all ask all my questions, so thanks. But I just wanted to say thank you to David and all the staff. This is so comprehensive, and I know you put a lot of work into this. And yeah, just, I've also been getting the same messages you all have been getting about folks feeling like they haven't gotten into, have any input yet. And I just really want to continue encouraging folks, as everyone has been, that this is just the beginning of the process, and we all really want to listen and take your input seriously and into consideration. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for all the great questions, everyone. It crossed a lot off my list. Just a couple of things. One is, I just wanted to just remind us to be sensitive to those, there are a few, you know, businesses that have been targeted as not the best for this new plan. And, you know, if, if you, if I was the owner of one of those businesses that had been in my family for all these years, and maybe at one time it was a very celebrated business, and now we're saying, well, that doesn't really fit there. Just to be careful of, you know, our language and how we approach that, because there have been people that have felt targeted, and rightly so, because we are listing out, hey, these are, you know, the best places to do things. But I just think that we need to be sensitive in the way that we approach that and speak to people that are owning these businesses. It's easy, as we're, you know, doing things on paper and in meetings, to talk about things as things and not realize that they're attached to people who, you know, and their livelihoods and their family histories. So I just wanted to, to remind us all for that. A suggestion that I have, and I don't, you know, just for the future, because we are going to have a lot of work to do on this, and it was kind of brought up by one of, one of my colleagues, I'm not sure who, about maybe taking things in sections. I think when we were talking about traffic. And so just as a thought, if it's reasonable, when time, when the time comes to start really giving our input, maybe we break it down so that we're not trying to input on the whole plan in one night. Because then we kind of get all over the place. So if we could just, you know, today, this meeting, we're talking about parking. This meeting, we're talking about building heights or whatever, you know, break it down, if that, if that works for the process. That's just a suggestion. And then I actually have a question, David, that I think is kind of the opposite of a lot of them that have been asked. But when we're talking about building heights, I think the first thing that most of us jump to is, all of a sudden, there's going to be all of these great, big, tall buildings, and then what are we going to do? I'm kind of looking at it from a different perspective in that we do need some bigger buildings to house people. And is it financially feasible? Is this plan financially feasible for developers just giving the constraints and the cost of construction? And I think that has, that was brought up on a walking tour that I was in that had some builders in it. So could you just speak to that?
Yeah, I think that's a really important element to this. The history of this has been so long that, you know, there are threads that are, you know, picked up, and then, and then we move on and implement, and then we don't go back to the thread. But one of the key threads from the beginning and the presentations on the concept that I provided was, you know, development, a lot of the times, you know, it comes to the city of Arcata or any jurisdiction. And, you know, someone comes forward with the development, and they say, I want to do this. And then we go through this series of, you know, planning processes and, you know, going to all these different committee meetings. And, you know, ultimately, all of the different sectors of, you know, society that it takes to create these buildings that we in fact need. We need places to live. We need places to work. We need the buildings. And so the buildings themselves, the activities that occur within them are an important community need. But we've, you know, the process treats them as, you know, as adversary. It creates all these, you know, conditions of approval, and then ultimately, you know, a developer will decide, well, I, you know, I can or I can't do that, you know, based on whatever the approval process is. And more and more, as development has gotten more and more expensive, you know, developers have opted out. They've just said, look, I'm not, I'm not building anymore. We've gotten a lot of feedback from developers that, you know, right now, the way that the building industry is structured, you, you just really can't do it unless there's a huge government subsidy. The vast majority of development in the city of Arcata in the last five years, except for small one-off projects, you know, has been supported by, you know, by subsidy. And so that feasibility piece is core to this mission. It's, it's core to the, you know, to the objective. If we create the greatest plan in the world that has all the bells and whistles, and it's everything that we want, nothing may get built. And it kind of goes to, you know, Rob's presentation when he was using those dials to show, well, we may want all these things, but if we ask for them, then things don't get built. So ultimately, I think that, you know, as we go through the community process, you know, we may have this kind of, you know, push and pull where, you know, maybe the community says, look, we want all buildings to be LEED-certified. And we're going to check in with the, you know, with the development community, and they're going to say, well, I can probably build you a net-zero building, but paying to have my building LEED-certified doesn't capture, doesn't garner anything, and so can we take that off the table? And so there may be a little bit of this, you know, back and forth with how we ultimately end up with a community benefits program that is both feasible. You can actually, you know, pencil it on a project and is also something that the community wants to see. What I will say, though, is that this was, you know, because that was a central theme when we began this work, we, the first step after the housing element that directed us to do this work, the first step we took was to work on the infill market study. And the infill market study really evaluated, you know, on a pro forma level, you know, how much it would cost to build these buildings. And so that infill market study really informed some of the decisions around how dense does a building need to go before it starts to pencil? Which is part of the reason why we started with, you know, six, seven, and eight stories, based on that feedback. You know, again, this is the priority. If we say, well, you can only build a four-story building, it might mean that we need to add more subsidy to projects to get them to pencil, at least in the near term.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions before we open it up for public comment? Well, we can take, we can take a break. Yeah. Yeah, we're, all right. So we're gonna, we have, we have some personal needs to attend to. So we're going to take a five-minute break and let you all take a break, and we will be back, and we'll start right in with public comment. So thank you. So thank you. Welcome back, everyone. So we're going to jump into public input and this is for the Gateway Area Plan Agenda item. And you will have three minutes in which to speak on this. So it's, it's your three minutes. You can speak the whole time. I'm just going to make a suggestion in the interest of time. If, um, you know, we have asked a ton of questions and if, if somebody that speaks before you, um, raises some points that you agree with, rather than re-going through the whole thing, it would be great if you could just stack onto that and say that's what, you know, you agree with that. But again, it's your three minutes. You can do whatever you want with it, as long as it's related to this agenda item. So let's go ahead and get started.
When we're done with, um, public comment, could we please bring it back to the council for comments, questions? Thank you.
All right. Our first public speaker is Sean. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
All right. Thank you. Um, hello, my name is Sean Mitchell. I'm the Vice President of Timber Heritage Association. We are a local nonprofit working to preserve the timber and railroad history of Humboldt County. After reviewing the strategic infill project, we have some serious concerns about the removal of railroad right of way for the project. Our organization has been working for almost 35 years to acquire equipment and to establish a world-class museum in the historic shops complex. This will be coupled with the Humboldt Bay Scenic Railroad, which will run on 16 miles of track from Samoa through Arcata into Eureka. This tourist railroad will support local businesses and encourage people to visit our area. So just a few key issues in the planning document. In segment K of the project, the historic Northwestern Pacific Railroad connects our facility in Samoa to Eureka. Removing this segment of track would effectively bisect our two ends of the railroad. The Bay Trail segments in Arcata and the future Bay Trail South are both rail with trail projects. We believe that for sections K, which run directly from Samoa to Eureka, this is also possible. Sections H, F and I would also affect the railroad and future, future operations. Regrettably, not one mention is made about the process, which must be followed for removal of track. No city government has the legal authority to remove track for trail installation without approval from the Surface Transportation Board. This federal body is congressionally mandated to protect railroad right of ways with first emphasis on rail use, freight commuter excursion in that order, and finally intern trail use. Any removal track which severs a railroad right of way should be considered illegal unless full rail banking process occurs. Humboldt County and Eureka are going through this process for the Bay Trail and is being done to accommodate future excursion use. Currently, N C R A, the current owner of the line, is trying to railbank the railroad for intern trail use. This is effectively an abandonment light process, which allows for trails to be built on the right of way, but preserves the property for railroad rebuilding if the need arises. This process is currently on hold through an S T B abeyance order because the body cannot determine if N C R A had the legal authority to start building a trail on the right of way in Blue Lake without S T B approval. Long story short, Arcata must respect the process as the current abeyance order is putting the Humboldt Bay Trail and the Great Redwood Trail projects on hold. Now, finally, we ask you to consider that having the Humboldt Bay Scenic Railroad would provide tourism for opportunities for the city, allowing residents to ride a scenic excursion to from Eureka, Samoa and points along the route. For, it would provide breathtaking views of our bay and landscapes. It would provide and bolster employment opportunities for local hotels, restaurants, shops, pubs and the like, and provide an opportunity for a family-friendly, historic, educational experience, much like the Oregon Coast Scenic Railroad in Tillamook, Niles Canyon Railway in the Bay Area, the Nevada Northern in Ely, among others. All of these provide a massive draw for their communities. To close, please note that THA is 100% pro rail with trail and we will do whatever we can to support the trail projects, provided they respect our future concerns. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you, Sean. Next speaker is Matt. Go ahead, Matt.
Hi, uh, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Matt Simmons and I'm here with the Redwood Coalition for Responsible Environmental and Climate, uh, you know, I can't remember our acronym. It's rocker. Um, first, I want to say that I'm really happy to see that this plan is moving along. Um, you know, as a renter here in Arcata, it's really upsetting that rent has gone up so high because we haven't been able to build housing in the last, you know, decades. And so seeing the, the city plan to build housing and not just housing, but housing that's pedestrian friendly and bicyclist friendly and, you know, it's near the center of town. And so you, you don't, like, absolutely need a car. Not everyone will need a car. All of that is really fantastic and it's going to help Arcata, you know, transition to a community that is, you know, more in line with our climate goals. And, you know, something that I want to say about public meetings like this is that they tend to favor current homeowners and people who, you know, aren't rent, rent burdened. And so I just wanted to say, you know, on behalf of all the people who pay rent and all the people who can't afford to move to Arcata right now, and all the people who would love to take a job in Arcata, but they, they have to live far away and, and do a long commute. You know, building this housing in the center of town is just gonna, it's, it's really gonna change a lot of opportunities for a lot of people. And it's a, it's a really great investment in this community and in all those folks that, you know, will be able to live here in the future if we, if we build this. So thank you for doing this. Really excited about it, um, and excited to see the plan progress.
Thank you, Matt. All right. Our next speaker is Colin. Go ahead.
Hi, uh, this is Colin Fisk with CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. CRTP has over 600 members and supporters, many of them in the city of Arcata, and we strongly support the proposed Gateway Area Plan. And we would encourage, um, the council to support it and move it along as well. Uh, as I've now said publicly a number of times, this is the most bike and pedestrian-friendly land use plan that we've ever seen proposed in our region, and I'm extremely proud of the city for putting it forward. I do want to be clear about what makes the plan so bike and pedestrian friendly. Part of it is the, the one-lane streets with traffic calming features, the new bike lanes, the wider sidewalks, the new multi-use trails, other aspects of the streetscape and circulation system. Uh, and a big part of it also is the density and the mixture of uses and the, relatedly, the, the lack of extensive area devoted to parking. This plan proposes a density of residential development that will support a stronger public transit system in a location near downtown that supports walkability and bikability. It proposes a mixture of non-residential uses that are calculated to support jobs and services within the new development area, um, sufficient to keep most trips short enough to walk, bike or roll. And all of that's only possible with these types of higher density development, in other words, building height that are proposed, as we can see from decades of land use planning experience around the world. Finally, I want to address, uh, an objection I heard, which goes something like, you know, this plan is going to have a lot of impact, it's going to cause a lot of changes, and it won't even solve the housing crisis or the climate crisis. And it's true. This isn't the silver bullet. It's not the solution to all of our problems. There, there is no such thing. But, um, you know, that's not a strike against the plan. It's a reflection of the scale and complexity of the problems we're facing. After adopting the plan, we will need to keep up our ambition. We'll need to do more and we'll need to do it quickly because we are facing, you know, crises, both in, in the form of, um, housing as well as, of course, the climate. Uh, but the plan is a major step in the right direction and I really hope that you support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. All right. Our next speaker is Elizabeth. Go ahead, Elizabeth. Can you unmute, Elizabeth? Yep. Perfect. Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Um, my name's Elizabeth. Oh, it says that. And, um, I was glad to know I wasn't late to the party. I've only been coming about two months. Um, I have gone on a few of the walks and enjoyed the, the. Basically, I called to let you know I, I support this plan. Um, I think it's really great, big picture. We need more housing for current Arcata residents and for the people who will be moving here. And we also need a strategic infill plan. We need to protect our surrounding areas. To step back, this is something that Arcata has been working towards and on for the last 30 years. And, um, you know, so we really don't have a lot of choices. You either have infill or you have sprawl. And/or the third choice might be that you have a very rich enclave, like say the town of Monterey. And so really, there aren't other choices between that. And let's face it, sprawl is really bad for the climate. And infill is good. And part of, some other speakers have spoken of another reason why that is. Um, and so, you know, there are a ton of things that we need to talk about in this plan, uh, so that we're balancing the needs of the current population and, and also, and these needs to do this as well as preserving special character of our town. But that includes preserving the open spaces and agricultural lands around all town. So, um, you know, I just want to remind all of us that this is a zoning plan. This is not a redevelopment agency creation plan. This is a zoning plan very much like our general plan. It does the same things. And the city of Arcata does not own this land. We control the land through the zoning and then other, and, and limits we put on that. And speaking of that, so, you know, however, in this place, you know, the rezoning is going to add a lot of value to a lot of parcels. And so I'm thrilled to see the community benefit matrix. And I think we might just want to have a couple of basic line matrix related to creation of affordable housing, maybe after a certain percentage that we require a certain percent, a certain number of units, we'd require a certain percentage, maybe the city would help fund that. And then obviously, we need impact fees to help with infrastructure. And so, um, you know, again, we need, um, you know, as we're looking, the reason I say prioritize this benefit, this is a great opportunity. And let's face it, they're not making any new parcels. So this is our opportunity to require a certain number of affordable housing. And let's remember the other big problem, one of the other huge issues in town we're solving is homelessness. The solution is creating more housing and affordability. Lastly, I just want to say thank you to staff. I think you've done a great job. I really appreciate it and I know a lot of other people did. The, um, the F A Qs, really helpful, the briefness. And I just want to say thank you and, um, I encourage the council to support the plan.
Thank you, Elizabeth. All right. Our next speaker is Dan. Go ahead, Dan.
Hello, I'm Daniel Bixler. Uh, I've been a resident of Arcata since 1988 and a homeowner for the last 15 years. First, I want to just really thank the mayor, city council, city manager and city staff for all your hard work and dedication on this. This is a really, um, intense, uh, program going on, our project, and we need to, I think we need to slow it down and involve residents and businesses much more. Um, I have to say humbly that I'm a little bit, um, you know, offended by our previous discussion around trailers. I mean, these are residents of Arcata in real people. I wasn't going to mention that, but when I heard that, it just makes me upset that we're talking about other people in that way or their homes. But my biggest concerns really are, um, the height of the buildings and, um, the change of the aesthetics of Arcata in our nice warm community, as well as the flooding. Right now, we have two sewer pathways, the Jolly Giant, James Creek, and in my home at the Greenview, um, neighborhood, um, and, and several neighborhoods around me, it floods dramatically twice a year, where cars can't drive. It goes three feet up into my driveway. That's a serious issue, especially with global warming and rising tides. We need to really tackle the infrastructure before the environmental plan. It should be a part of the fundamental original plan, in my opinion. Um, the other thing I just wanted to mention is that there are examples of towns in California that have grown really fast. If you've ever been to Isla Vista, I was there in the late eighties and then I went there just a couple of years ago, they have eight and 10-story buildings and the whole feeling of community has been ripped out from it. It's a very cityfied place. Um, you know, parking's something that we need to tackle and they've tackled it and, and, and it's like, we need to really just be sensitive towards that. Santa Cruz is another one. And this is a place where the crime rate has grown incredibly because of that development. We're talking about a 30% growth in Arcata population. So again, my overall thing is we just need to slow it down and we need to involve the businesses and the, um, residences, the renters and the owners of much, much more. When I was on the plaza planning committee, we worked really hard for about a year and we still, I wish we would have gotten more people involved. It's not the residents' responsibility to be involved. It's the city of Arcata's responsibility to reach out to the residents. Thank you so much for all you're doing.
Thank you, Dan. All right. Our next speaker is Aaron. Go ahead, Aaron.
Uh, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Hi. Um, so I'm asking the council to direct staff to do a press release that states, "City of Arcata staff is proposing to allow developers to build eight-story apartment buildings in Arcata." Um, also released that they are planning to allow 3,500 apartment units to be built in Arcata over the course of the plan. By that, I mean it's time to stop beating around the bush. If it's such a great plan, city staff should have no problem spreading the word in a way that is transparent and honest with the public, which includes people that don't Zoom council and planning commission meetings. Uh, another point is that, right now, the market is telling us that plug in electric cars are the future, or at least for the near future. Uh, I don't see how someone is going to plug in their car with street parking that could be a block or maybe more from their home. This plan will leave electric vehicle owners without a way to exist. And I don't think that's a smart idea and a plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Okay. Our next speaker is Greg. Go ahead, Greg. Can you unmute? Go ahead and unmute, Greg. There you go.
There we go. All right. I tried it a couple of times. Sorry about that. Hey, uh, thank you, city council, for, uh, your time and your, uh, service to the city. I very much appreciate it. I wanted to first, uh, I don't want to start too much on a negative thing, although I'm can be negative, uh, sounding, but I wanted to first say, and this is surprising that I have to say this, that I found it sort of disrespectful and condescending, uh, Rob Hamlin's presentation. Um, you know, I don't want magic housing. I didn't like the Pegasus. I don't need to do any soul searching. I'm not lying to myself. And if Oakland is doing so well, head on down there, man. We don't want Oakland up here. So that's the first thing. The other thing is, you know, uh, with all due respect to David Loy and the staff, who I know put tons of time into this, um, the words such as being aspirational about alternative transportation measures and to incentivize other modes, modalities, you know, it's, it's really words on paper. So, uh, my organization, Cisco Land Conservancy, we're going to take the unusual step of actually addressing this plan as a way to actually deal with the climate crisis. And I appreciate the kind of, you know, sort of modern look at transportation and the green paint on the roads. But, you know, paint is not protection. People are not going to ride. If you're going to add, excuse me, 3,500 people to this quadrant of the city, you know, 3,450 of them are going to drive every day. All right? Um, unless you make it safer, uh, to ride a bike, to walk or whatever, and make it more difficult and expensive to, uh, uh, get around in a car. And also impossible in places. So my mantra in this is that we have so much pavement in this city already. All cities do. The car is a failed experiment. Take away some of that pavement and give it to cyclists, pedestrians, people in wheelchairs, and develop other modes of transportation for the elderly, the disabled, electric shuttles, um, access, uh, through, uh, with say Fastpass-type, uh, devices where you can go through a gate, things like that. But, and we can make this work. Uh, you know, I can't say exactly how we can do it, but I do know we have to, uh, put cars in their place, take away pavement, give it to the others, give it to people without a car, and make it so that it's just difficult and in some places impossible to drive a car, such as the plaza. The fact that there are still cars allowed on the plaza is really discouraging. Uh, and we don't need to have, you know, uh, cars to have a viable economy. In fact, there are a lot of places in the world right now that are showing the economy picks up, uh, when, uh, cars go away because it's far more family-friendly, et cetera. So if you really want to deal with the climate crisis, your preceding item was about that, uh, you have to deal with cars, the number one, uh, carbon emitter, uh, in Humboldt County is transportation. Uh, and we need, if you're going to add all these people and not deal with it in that way, restricting cars, not just hoping, then, uh, the problem will knock away and we're going to have a gridlocked city that is unlivable. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. All right. Our next speaker is, goes by 350 Humboldt. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Pat Carr. And actually, I want to clarify, I'm not speaking for, uh, 350 Humboldt. Uh, I am really speaking just for myself, a resident of Arcata. And, uh, my handle is on inaccurately. I apologize for that. That was my error. At any rate, uh, I want to thank the, uh, staff for all of the information about this plan tonight. And I'm definitely one of the many people who you'll hear say that we definitely need much more housing in Arcata now. Uh, it's really clear that the opportunities for people to find housing, either rentals or, uh, purchasing houses is just, uh, very, very challenging. And there'll be a lot more people moving here, most likely. So I am glad that the city is developing a plan to address this. I'm also very supportive of the plan's efforts to reduce reliance on automobile use. And, uh, clearly, this kind of approach is what we need to reduce, uh, at least our vehicular climate impacts. I also want to, um, point out that development that encourages active transportation, things like bike facilities and more trails, support for pedestrian use, and also co-locating, uh, sources of employment right adjacent with housing. These are, uh, also things that promote good health habits. When people are more active, they tend to be a lot healthier. They're just burning more calories, they're using their bodies more, much more, and they're simply good for having a healthy population, which I know are, uh, values that we all support. So I, um, pretty much support what I have heard tonight and would like to be learning more about it, but I'm, uh, at this point- about it, but I'm, at this point, very much a supporter. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
All right, our next speaker is Jim. Go ahead, Jim. Go ahead and unmute, Jim. I think we did that simultaneously. That was my fault. Go ahead and unmute again. Oh, you had it, Jim.
Oh, there you go, sorry.
Perfect.
All right, that was a little bit of a challenge, but thank you. Hello, city council, my name is James Becker. I want to thank you all for what a good job you did conveying a lot of your constituents' concerns. Mine was addressed, I mean, just briefly, I just want to express it. One of my major ones is the concern about the marsh treatment plant, and it sounds like it was discussed, and I look forward to see how they're planning to handle the 3,500 new housing units and what's the plan for the additional stormwater under the conditions with the, it's already at capacity and under work to address that. And in addition, I just want to let you know, I do support infill, I support affordable housing, and I support transparency. I'm a cyclist, I walk. My wife own a house in the, in this district, what's considered to be the gateway zone, and we do occasionally get the feeling that somehow it's, that it's a bad thing to own a home, and I'm hoping at some point, people understand that if they don't, I wish they have an opportunity, and if they do, then they probably understand it's just something you managed to achieve at some point in your life. We built our home here, we built it from a lot of salvage materials, we built it to last, and, you know, I'm really proud of it. And with that in mind, one question I have, just so David mentioned about trying to leave behind the subject of when we were informed about things, I just have one question I would like to pose to him. Why didn't you use the community property and business owners as a focus group back in October 2020? And if you can give me a direct answer, that would be great, and that would be my only question at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, James, and I will, we'll make a note to have Director Lawyer answer that to you outside of the meeting time, so thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Patricia. Go ahead, Patricia.
Hi, yeah, I'd like to thank the city council. They've been actually very, very engaged with the public, I've been hearing that a lot from a lot of people, so, yeah, again, thank you. So I'm a big advocate for infill and think this area would be great for it. You know, I love the walk and biking paths that are proposed in it, the green spaces that are proposed, the art installations. I mean, there's a lot about this that, you know, fantastic. I think it's kind of started on a good foundation. But there's some big concerns that a lot of people have. One is scale, we've kind of covered a lot of that. I think, simply put, you know, the higher the building, the higher the construction cost, and the higher the rent. So I don't think larger buildings bring affordable housing. And not to mention, there's nothing mentioned, nothing in this about the homeless, you know? That's really a population that we should be striving for as well. I think the impact on our infrastructure and environment are not, are kind of overlooked. This design plan should have been, they should have considered the threshold first, what is the threshold, and then designed it around this plan around that. The wastewater treatment plant, we have a $30 million loan with interest, to just bring that up to standard, and I heard from somebody working with that plant that they're just kind of crossing their fingers that this is going to work, that they really don't really know how it's going to work once it gets established, this new conversion. The fire district is underfunded and understaffed as now. I don't know where we're going to get the funding to, you know, to fight a fire in an eight-story building. We'll need a ladder truck, which we don't have one right now, I don't know if anybody's aware of that. We'll need a 100-foot ladder truck. The traffic, there's some traffic issues. Of course, you know, public transportation should be built first, we should have a really good system before we bring in these numbers. I propose making, keeping L Street as a linear park, a corridor, a bike corridor. We're, we're trying to squeeze in one of the widest roads, one of the smallest areas, and we're just building another road, we're just building pavement for another road, and just using that as corridor, keeping K Street as a two-lane road so that, you know, the fire trucks can get through, emergency vehicles can get through, delivery trucks can get, you know, make the deliveries, buses can get through.
Patricia, that's your three minutes, but thank you so much for your comments.
All right, our next speaker is Lizzie. Go ahead. Perfect. Go ahead. Can you hear us, Lizzie?
I think you're on, Lizzie.
Oh, okay, I couldn't tell, it doesn't like say anything. I'm like at the Peter Lounge, but I really wanted to make a comment saying that I very much support this plan, and I think that, you know, we're in a housing crisis and in a climate crisis, and, you know, those are things that we say a lot, but that are kind of slow, slow-moving to make any progress in. And I know with this plan, it'll still be like years until I see any of these, you know, four, five, six-story buildings. So, you know, I, I just, I think that it's a, it's a great step, something that we really need to have happen. It took me six months to find a place in Arcata again, so I recently moved back from the communal, and that was, you know, several months ago. I see people, thousands of people on the Humboldt Rentals group begging for housing, saying, you know, they'll pay whatever, they're tired of staying in a hotel, they have children, they have pets. Yeah, but this is, this is something that really I think needs to happen, and I appreciate staff making it happen, because it seems really difficult. So yeah, thank you guys very much, and I am supportive, and yeah.
Thank you, Lizzie.
All right, our next speaker goes call-in user four. Go ahead. Looks like you're unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, this is Joanne McGary McGreta. I, again, there's about a 30-second delay on my phone listening and what I'm watching, so it's really disconcerting, so I hope we can fix that for those of us who don't have Zoom capabilities or in-person capabilities. But I just want to say, first of all, that I've heard the Gateway Area Plan so many times now, and why it's called Gateway, maybe we really need to change the name and talk about like the walkabout area, because that is what a climate-changing world is going to need. We are going to need not to accommodate individual vehicles, but we're going to need to accommodate people moving through our community in a different way. And what Patricia said and what Greg King said earlier, we really need to design the transportation component of all this with climate change in mind, and experiment with these ideas of one-ways and walkability and bikeability before we start, you know, building the big, huge structures. And I also think we should look at livability and thriveability of our design for any of this new housing, and I'm not opposed to multi-storied housing if it's livable and thrivable, and people with children and dogs and, you know, elderly people and disabled people can really not just live in a box in an infilled area. So climate change and transportation really need to be the initial focus of all this, and we should start trying things out, and probably, I think, change the name to something more appropriate, and maybe we even start to look at equity issues and consult with the WIOU, and find out what they might think would be an appropriate nomenclature for this area. So please, you know, we need a lot of help in our community, and we need more people coming to make sure everybody can live safely, sanely, affordably, but we don't just need to build it because that's what we're going to do. We need to build it smartly and with survivability and thriveability in mind, so thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
All right, our next speaker is Lulu. Go ahead.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, you're up next. Go ahead.
Awesome, my name's Lulu Michelson, and I wanted to express my enthusiastic support for the Gateway Area Plan. As an Arcata resident who has struggled to find quality and affordable rental housing in the city, this plan will be a really important opportunity for housing created through thoughtful density that benefits the community and the environment. And I think I just want to echo some of what we've heard from other speakers, that this crisis is not some sort of, or this plan is not for future residents. Today, it can be incredibly hard as a, you know, younger professional to find housing in this area, and I think it's, you know, I'm come to this housing search with a huge amount of privilege and access, and I can only imagine for folks with less, this place is a very hard place to make home, even when folks want to, you know, provide and contribute to the community. And so I also wanted to say that I'm really impressed by the comprehensive and creative approach of this plan. I think it'll help our community thoughtfully and proactively accommodate the growth that this region is already experiencing through infill rather than sprawl that robs us of our beautiful, wild, and cultivated lands. And I'm particularly impressed by the commitment to centering equity and creating a walkable and bikeable area that prioritizes people over cars, and creating new opportunities for local businesses and housing that includes community assets for all new development. So as a small community, this plan will be critical to ensuring that we manage the current incoming changes in population in a way that aligns with our values and ensures the greatest benefit for our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you, Lulu.
Our next speaker is...
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead, Jen.
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead. I think we're having trouble with audio on this side, I apologize.
Yeah, I can't hear anything on your side in between speakers, but, hi, this is Jennifer Calt with Humboldt Baykeeper, and thanks for the opportunity to learn more about this plan and to express comments. Humboldt Baykeeper has had an office in this neighborhood since 2014, and from Humboldt Baykeeper's perspective, this plan is very forward-thinking, and I'm really thrilled to see, you know, planners thinking in terms of 50 years. It's not very typical that planners think that far out, but we clearly need to be thinking that far out nowadays, and, you know, the aerial image that you showed about showing the city with the agricultural lands and the forest lands really struck a chord with me that, you know, we really need to be developing in already impacted areas of the city, which are what I would call very underutilized. A lot of these older businesses are, you know, big, empty parking lots, they're not very well-used anymore, and some of them even seem to be vacant. And a lot of this development can be done without the environmental impacts that would happen, which would be really unavoidable if we were to develop on agricultural lands or forest lands near streams and wetlands. And so, you know, a lot of these areas need assessment and cleanup of contamination left from past industries, and to reuse these lands for housing is really, really would be the highest and best use. And I do, I do want to say, you know, I think there are a lot of details that would have to be worked out, you know, as the plan goes, but I hope, I hope people keep in mind that this development isn't going to just appear, you know, in the next couple of years. This is a very long-term plan, and it's going to be, you know, develop property by property by, by business owners or landowners who decide that it's in their interest to do so. So I hope people will, will see the big picture, that this will be a benefit for not only Arcata, but for Humboldt State University, where the students have very, very difficult times finding housing. Even the professors have a hard time finding housing, and it'll be, it'll be great for the community as a whole, so I'll look forward to seeing it evolve, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Jen.
All right, I think we have the audio worked out. Our next speaker will be Dawn and/or Lindsey. Go ahead.
Hi, so I live in the Gateway District. I have lived here my entire life, I'm a homeowner here, and I have a couple of concerns about this plan. One of them is the size and height concerns, which people have already brought up. Another thing I think would really be to slow down the process and actually have the business owners and the homeowners in this area, even the renters, like coming together to make, to help, to help with the process. I know that David said that we were not late to the party, however, I feel like when they were doing all of these focus groups and all of this outreach, that they really should have probably contacted the community members who are going to be directly affected by the Gateway Plan. I feel like certainly for our neighborhood, it hits a little harder because we had a data center put in, and we were never given any say-so of that either. I've gone on the community walks, and I feel like anytime any of our neighbors express anything, we are met with negative comments and our questions are not answered, but I'm very concerned. I'm concerned about the water treatment plant also, I'm concerned about the parking. If people don't think that when people are going to move here, they're not going to come with cars, that's just, I don't think, a thing. I know that there have been many references to the cities, Oakland, San Francisco, you know, all of those things, but one of the nice things about Arcata is its small-town charm, and I think that with the buildings that are going to go, and we're going to lose that, I know we do have a housing crisis, I fully understand that, and I think really it needs to be started with infrastructure for the buildings. I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse in many aspects of this, like the sewer treatment plant and the fire department, who didn't know about it until last Friday. So thank you for letting me speak, and that's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Lindsey.
All right, our next speaker is Melinda. Go ahead, Melinda.
Hello, I am Melinda Myers. I also live in Arcata and also own a rental property that's just inside the Gateway District and borders on the Opportunity Area labeled J. Many of those people have been our neighbors for decades, and I would like to echo an earlier comment about making sure that we consider the needs of those people and their need for affordable housing. That's the trailer park that is on 7th Street between J and K. There's not a place for those people to go while another project is built, and those people would have very low access to alternative housing, although I can understand why we would want it there. Housing is clearly a need in Arcata, the affordability of that housing is related to the cost of development. Right now, there are considerable barriers in place for small, individual homeowners to develop ADUs on their property with significant conditions for approval that often make those projects unfeasible, and if one can build them, they would prevent those units from being affordable in order to recoup the costs of some of those very large conditions. Now, while I'm generally in favor of a cohesive plan that increases housing, I have just one question that I would also appreciate David Lawyer answering, and that is this. In those 32 meetings that have happened since this draft was released, has there been any change to the draft as a result of the input from the community? And I'll take the rest of my time and pass it on to others and let you all get home at a reasonable hour.
Thank you, Melinda. And I will have Director Loyah get back to you offline.
Our next speaker is Chris. Go ahead, Chris, or someone from Chris Richards Automotive. Can you unmute? There you go, Chris.
Okay. Yeah, I'm fairly new to this Zoom technology, but it's not impossible to figure out. So, yeah, thanks for letting me speak. I don't want to reiterate too many points that have already been made. Thank you, Brett, for talking about many, many of the issues and ideas that are, you know, concerns and all of that. Thank you, David, for, you know, airing some of the concerns in a concise way at the beginning. That was good. Just a couple of things. I mean, basically, it's obvious you've put a lot of effort into this draft plan, which will help for the allotment of construction of high-density apartments in this area. Lots of fantastic ideas with the bike trails and the availability to the downtown area for walking and all of that. Some ideas are not so delightful. I'm not going to go much further into that. I think what's really lacking with the draft plan and should have been a part of it is the research details, concrete studies, and planning and implementation of the infrastructure required to make this growth successful. There is a shopping list of ideas mentioned towards the bottom of the draft plan that tells of hopes and aspirations. And I think a lot of that stuff is attainable, but I really think where that needs to be discovered and talked about before any kind of draft like this could be implemented. I mean, obviously, we've got water resource issues. They're finite. They're getting more finite every season. Arcata's world-renowned wastewater treatment system that's really the crown jewel more so than some of the other items listed is finite in design as well, even with the expanded tertiary marsh expansion that we've seen recently. And the yet-to-be-built primary sewage plant. I mean, those are all things that are going to make this plan work and click. But, you know, you've got all the other, all the other infrastructure demands, which I won't talk much about, you know, fire police, medical, social programs, school needs, childcare, you know, all of that. It's a big thing to entertain, but we really need to make sure we're, we're making a great plan, or it'll fall flat. I mean, more transparency with what's going on with HSU, the conversations and the monies that they're going to release with the development that they're probably going to acquire early on this year.
Chris, thank you so much for your input. That's your three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I went to come off.
No worries. Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Sheri. Go ahead, Sheri.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Council, members, and staff. And first, I want to thank David for addressing some of the initial concerns that we've been discussing with friends and neighbors. I'm a tenant, and I would love to be a homeowner in Arcata. And I agree that new housing is desperately needed here. I think that affordability should be the number-one priority in building out Arcata. It should be required, but not considered an amenity, granted at the discretion of builders in exchange for building height and extra floors. Affordable units should be deeded and should not revert to market rate after some period of time. In general, on the amenities, I still think that what's shown as examples of amenities in the plan should really be considered necessities. The city shouldn't give away amenities in exchange for building height. Also, how will infrastructure improvements be paid for? And who will pay for brownfield cleanup at the Beryl District? Infrastructure should be included in the Gateway Plan, not considered after adoption of the plan. Also, abundant public transit should be in place in advance of development to encourage people to evolve away from private cars. And then, the dreaded building height issue. I think we need to keep in mind Cal Poly Humboldt is adding 2,250 student housing units. There are other parts of the city where infill redevelopment will be coming, not just this district. Also, as of January 1st, SB 9 and SB 10 will allow an unknown number of units in all neighborhoods in the city. Considering the thousands of units outside the Gateway District that are going to be coming, do we really need heights that are double the current height restriction in the city? That's all I have for now. Thanks.
Thank you, Sheri. All right, our next speaker is call-in user six. Go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Yeah, hi. My name is Ken Miller. I live in McKinleyville, but I spend a lot of time in Arcata, as many of us do. And I wanted to ask the City Council if you would consider lobbying or negotiating with HSU, given all of the build-out that's happening and planned, to prohibit entering first-time students from bringing cars. We're talking about over 1,000 cars coming into the city. Now, I know the argument used to be that a lot of our students came from Southern California, and they were car-dependent. But now that we're going to be a poly institution, that's, that's no longer a draw. The university itself will be sufficient. So, I just want to encourage the City Council and maybe work with the county as well to go after its kind of low-hanging fruit. To be able to reduce that number of cars in one fell swoop would be a great step towards reducing vehicle traffic in the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken.
All right, our next speaker, call-in user seven. Go ahead. Can you unmute? Call-in user seven? Perfect.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Hold on, I need to turn down my volume on my computer. Okay. This is Keenan Hilton. I live in Arcata. And I just want to, first of all, say thanks to the council, and a huge thank you to DAF and the consultants for preparing this plan, because it is really inspiring stuff, I think. And, and also, as another person that went on one of the walking tours, I thought that was just great, like a fabulous way for staff to be able to engage with the community. And I really appreciate the varied and creative approaches to trying to increase democracy in the process. I know that it is not always easy, but yeah, definitely, definitely appreciate the efforts of staff. Yeah, I basically just want to voice support for this plan. I think that it engages the climate crisis and the housing crisis head-on. And at the same time, which I think is the most appropriate way to do it. And, and yeah, having that necessary density of multiple uses to make a place truly be walkable, bikeable, rollable, to make, you know, transit, you know, get enough, it's like, it's like all about meeting those different thresholds of what makes a place into that, like, popping place where people would be, you know, able to walk to meet most of their needs, or, you know, make the bus an option that is more enticing to a wider swath of people. I mean, and I think that this vision would create those conditions. It's a, you know, it's a vision that is designed with humans in mind, and that is just so exciting to me. You know, I don't need to echo all of the concerns that have been raised. I think other speakers have done so as far as affordability is concerned. I mean, it's a huge issue. I know you probably hear about it all the time. I think we're all talking about it all the time. It's a huge issue. Climate crisis, you know, I know that Arcata is not the only place that has to shoulder the burden and take responsibility for climate, but we are looking at tight timelines here. And, and I think having not just, I mean, having that combination of imagination and then being able to translate that into a vision. And I think that, that city staff has been able to take, has been able to take it and turn it into a vision. And it's one that I really support. So, that's all. Thank you.
Keenan, thank you so much for your support and your input. That's actually your three minutes, but we appreciate you calling in.
Okay. Great. Perfect.
Our next speaker, and at this point, our last speaker, unless anybody else raises their hand, is Patrick. Go ahead, Patrick.
Yeah, hello. Thank you for having me here. Also, too, thank you for putting all the time and energy you put into this plan. There's some really good ideas here. And I have some concerns. But first of all, we definitely need housing. We need it now. We'll need more of it in the future. And for those of you that took six months to find a place to live, I moved here 23 years ago. It took me six months to find a place to live here. So, that's not changed at all. I don't want to get sidetracked, but I got to say I'm fed up with the rail. I'm tired of them holding up and being obstructive to all of our really good plans up here, and I just don't want to hear it anymore. But let's not get sidetracked. My concerns are the building height. I'm really concerned for those people who live in these historic homes and having a four-story building just on the other side of their fence to block their solar, to block their gardens, to block their privacy. I think we need to really think about that and maybe do some setbacks so it's not so obtrusive to those homeowners there. I'm worried about parking, and I know we need to get away from cars, but we're not going to get away from cars. We're going to go to EV. That's where the future is. We're all going to get EV cars. And there's going to be plenty of people who need to drive their car to the store, to work, to all kinds of places. And we talk about biking and walking and all that. There's a lot of elderly people who cannot bike and walk. And so, we've got to keep that in mind. And they're going to need to have to drive somewhere, charge their cars, have parking, and not be two or three blocks away from their home. I'm worried about the fast track of this whole thing. I think that I understand the need for that, or I understand the desire for that, because it makes it more attractive for developers to come in and do all of this work. But I'm worried about that, because I think that can get out of hand. I think it happened already on Seventh Street. That seemed to get fast-tracked. I'm worried about dislocating local businesses. If we're trying to create employment here locally, yet we're going to dislocate these businesses and put them somewhere else, we still have to drive there to work. And then, of course, the wastewater, that's been discussed. And then, one last thing, somebody said that this is going to increase the value of all of our properties. It won't. It'll increase the value of some properties that are developable. It'll decrease the value of others that aren't. And we have an historic home. There is no way the city's ever going to let us level that home and build a four, five, six-story home in that neighborhood. There's just no way. Our home was built in 1896 in that area. There's just no way. It's historic. So, I went quickly because I thought I had less time, but I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
All right, looks like we have two more speakers. Our next speaker is Catherine. Go ahead.
Hi there. You're hearing me by phone, even though I'm dialed into the meeting. My name's Catherine Cox. I live over in Valley West. And I am a homeowner over here, and I'm also one of the people who probably would need to keep using my car because I have some disabilities. My concern, though, isn't really about any of those, nor is it about building height. My concern is about something that was mentioned earlier in the meeting, earlier in the presentation, when I believe it was David mentioned that the plan takes into account a one-foot, the anticipated sea-level rise by 2050. And if anybody's been paying attention to the news about climate change and sea-level rise, you probably have, may have heard that within, very recently, within the last week, there have been new estimates that the largest glacier in Antarctica, the Thwaites Glacier, is showing signs of imminent collapse within the next five years. It's anticipated that if it collapses completely, it alone will cause a doubling of that to approximately a two-foot sea-level rise by 2050. And, of course, there's additional increases if the entire Western Antarctic ice shelf collapses in its wake. I'm concerned, because I'm hearing us talk about 2050, and that's less than 30 years out. These new buildings are going to be going in, and I hope they're going to have a longer-than-30-year lifespan. And I was looking earlier today at the NOAA website to look at projections of how sea-level rise would affect our area. And I really, I am pro this plan. I think the plan is a good one in its overall concept. I think it's doing an excellent job. But I am very concerned that overall, we are not looking far enough out in terms of how sea-level rise can affect us. And that has to be addressed from the very beginning, from the zoning to the planning of any construction that goes in. Because at two feet, the Mall Boulevard is not going to be too badly affected. At four feet or six feet, it starts to have serious impact on some of the area that's being considered for development. And so, any construction that goes in there, any bus routes, any roads, any services, any infrastructure, is going to have to take that into account. So, that's my concern. Other than that, I think it's an excellent plan. It looks good. I think there, you know, there are some concerns about buildings and heights. But the character of our city is changing, and I don't think we can necessarily, I don't think we can hold it back completely. The best we can do is guide it and try to-
Catherine, thank you so much. That's your three minutes, but thank you for your input.
Okay, we had one other speaker, but it looks like she put her hand down. So, I see no more public comment.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for your participation and comments. So, are there any final questions or comments from council?
Yeah, I was just thinking in this questions-and-answer section, frequently asked questions, I noticed a lot of the questions, the answers begin with a yes or no. And I think it would be, you know, make it more clear. Does the area plan propose to make it easier for developers to build new buildings? I mean, I think that's a definite yes, and we should add yes to that, just for clarification for the public. And then, my other question was, what conversations have there been with the Coastal Commission staff about this plan, if there's been any?
Excuse me. We've had preliminary discussions with Coastal Commission staff. They know that the plan's in development, and they're anticipating a plan amendment with whatever plan gets finally adopted. Local coastal program plan amendment, that is.
Great, thanks. And, yeah, you know, just the more I think about it, I'd really like to see more ironed-out plans for providing services, especially wastewater treatment. You know, I feel like you don't, you know, draw up plans for a house and build the house without knowing that you're going to be able to have services to hook up to your house. And, you know, it's been raised by the public. You know, I know it's an issue we've been dealing with for a while. And I feel like that's a really, you know, that and deciding on building height, to me, seem like the most important issues right now that we should be addressing. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, it looks like we are moving on to new business. So, we have several items in this. The first one is item A, consider introducing ordinance number 1554, amending the housing for homeless, combining zone, allowing- the housing for homeless combining zone, allowing permanent supportive housing at two locations in the Valley West neighborhood. So could we please get a staff report from Community Development Director David Loia?
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. This item before you tonight is, uh, in relation to an amendment to the land use code, which regulates, um, uses in the city. And specifically, uh, the request is to introduce ordinance number 1554, an ordinance, the City Council of the City of Arcata, amending the housing for homeless combining zone, waive reading of the text, and consent to read by title only. This, uh, recommendation comes with a little bit of a nuance that I'll, I'll explain to you in a moment, um, with, with a little bit of presentation, just to make it visually comprehensible. Uh, but essentially, the reason that we are proposing, um, this land use code combining zone overlay change is to allow for, uh, the placement of permanent supportive housing on the properties that are located at the, uh, the Red Roof End and the Days End, which are sub- subjects of the upcoming, uh, meeting materials as well, uh, for the home, Project Home Key, uh, staff reports. The Housing for Homeless Combining Zone, uh, does allow throughout the city, uh, various properties to be used for emergency shelter, transitional shelter, or permanent supportive housing. And you can see the currently adopted, uh, zones on packet page 90, in attachment A, figure two dash two three. So several sites scattered throughout the city, Alter Grove Industrial Park, along Samoa, and down on South G Street have been already adopted as combining zones. And this proposal would amend that combining zone and add the properties that are located on packet page 91. Uh, there's a little bit of feedback. Somebody can mute.
I think we got it.
Okay, cool. So let me, uh, share my screen with you and show you what that looks like. Okay. So before we get into the specific changes, I just want to go over a little bit of the public engagement, because I know this came up as a concern of the Planning Commission when we reviewed it last night. And they reviewed their recommendation to you on this zone change. Um, in order to prepare for this, we did the, uh, the mailing and notification that's required as a result of a zone amendment, but we also did noticing because of the projects that'll be coming up in your next two agenda items. So in total, uh, we sent out direct mailers to, uh, owners within 500 feet of the projects and residents within 300 feet of the projects. In addition, we did this eighth page ad, the Mad River Union. And then to notify people about the project meeting that we're having in support of the, the grant application, uh, we mailed again 500 residents and 100-plus businesses and property owners in the area. In addition, we worked with KUNA, Arcata House Partnership, and True North, uh, to help spread the word, um, as well as the neighbors who proactively took it upon themselves to, uh, use social media and Nextdoor, for example, to try and get the word out to folks. We had two project meetings to, um, to introduce the, the grants to the community. And we talked about, uh, primarily focused on the projects. But at those meetings, we had approximately 18 to 20 homeless individuals at a meeting that was structured primarily to seek input from the target population as to what resources they would need in these projects if they were to be developed. And then we had close to 60 people attend a Zoom webinar where we went through the projects and answered questions. The Q and As included in your, um, uh, packets as attachment B that resulted from both of those meetings. We compiled those Q and As that came from those meetings. And so folks had, uh, you know, notice, um, uh, and were able to come to these meetings. Um, and I hope that some of them are here tonight. Um, ordinance 1554, amends a couple of the sections in the land use code, uh, 928110, which addresses the combining zones as well as the, um, more specific regulations, uh, that are housed in 92, uh, 942200. That's the Housing for Homeless, uh, specific regulations that pertain, uh, to the zones that are identified in the, uh, the combining zone. The main change that was made here in the text of 942200 is to identify that the parcels included in the map, uh, that's being added, figure two dash two, 3.2, the Days End and Red Roof End projects, that those can only be used for permanent supportive housing. So unlike the rest of the Housing for Homeless Combining Zone, uh, which would allow transitional or emergency shelters, these are sort of targeted for permanent supportive housing, um, and aren't allowed to be used for those other uses. So here's where, uh, the nuance comes in. Because of the timing of these, and we'll get into the timeframes for the applications for, uh, for the projects in our next item. Um, and then in addition, we have Darlene Spoor representing Arcata House Partnership, and Chris Start representing, uh, Dan Coe Communities, the two project proponents that we would be jointly applying for the projects with here to answer any of your questions. Um, but the, the process for a zone change is typically that the Planning Commission makes a regulate, a recommendation that goes to City Council. They do an introduction of the ordinance to amend the land use code, and then the council can make an adoption. And it's a, you know, fairly straightforward process. Um, when we brought the item for the Planning Commission for their, uh, recommendation last night, um, after staff report deliberations and, uh, public comment, a motion was made to adopt resolution PC 2108, which would have made a recommendation for approval to the City Council. The motion failed for a lack of a second. So in effect, the Planning Commission made a recommendation to not approve the project. Instead, they made a recommendation or request through motion and, um, uh, affirmative voice vote to gather more information on the project and to continue the hearing to a January 11th to hear the item then. So we find ourselves in somewhat of a unique position where the PC's recommendation was, uh, not to approve the project at this time and to reconsider it later. So the council has a couple of options at this point. Um, one, you can reject the PC's recommendation to continue the item and think about it more. And you can introduce the ordinance tonight. You can then either adopt at the next hearing or potentially at the following hearing in January. That would be January 5th or January 19th. January 5th is before the Planning Commission, uh, would take this item up again, and January 19th is afterwards. You could accept the PC recommendation and continue the public hearing and introduce the ordinance later. Your next opportunity after January 11th would be January 19th, um, which does put us on some, uh, tight timeframes for the, uh, the grant requirements. Um, the grant deadline of January 31st is sort of a soft first milestone, after which, uh, the projects would receive $10,000 per door, so $10,000 per unit, less than they would receive, uh, if they can apply before January 31st. And, uh, uh, our partners on the, on the applications can describe that in a little more detail to you. And then third, you can accept the PC recommendation, um, PC recommendation, which effectively at this point is to disapprove the amendment. And I don't think anybody's recommending that. So what would happen if the PC, if you reject the PC recommendation, introduce the ordinance and adopt it at the next hearing, it's effectively no change to the project timeline. The project would be unaffected. Um, the applications can be made, um, and still meet that January 31 deadline. If you accept the PC recommendation and continue the public hearing introducing later, unless we do some, uh, special meetings to, you know, to make sure that we meet these deadlines, um, we're, we may lose some of that funding. And then lastly, um, you know, the projects wouldn't be able to be approved if we disapprove the amendment. I'm only putting the third option on there, not recommending that, but I wanted to be completely transparent about what the city council's options are at this time. So, um, I can go into a little bit more detail about what the ordinance, um, you know, changes are, but I'd like to hear, you know, if there are questions about specific changes to the ordinance that, that would be made. Um, I can also provide you more input and background on, uh, the deliberations that the Planning Commission had. Um, Darlene Spoor, as I mentioned, and Chris Start are here, uh, to answer any questions you may have about the project specifically. Um, but I'm curtailing my, my staff report here just a little bit, um, due to the, the late hour, and would be happy to answer any questions that you have, and would encourage you to take public comment before making your, your deliberations and decision.
Do we have any questions or comments?
Yeah. Was there a concern during the Planning Commission meeting that, um, there wasn't enough public input? Was that one of the concerns?
That was one of the current concerns, um, that they felt like maybe people didn't hear about the, you know, the option, or hear about the, the, um, proposed zoning change. And they based that, uh, largely on many of the planning commissioners were involved in the original SB2 zoning that created these zones in the first place. And they remember the public discussion, the dialogue, and, you know, the concerned neighbors saying, hey, you know, I don't want a homeless shelter next door to my house, so don't put it over here. And it was really a month-long, um, uh, series of meetings that eventually landed on, you know, the set of parcels that technically meets the SB2, um, objectives. We established zones that were required by state law where these uses are allowed. But many of them, uh, that we adopted were, you know, never going to be used for, uh, housing for homeless. Um, you know, the, the, uh, properties down on South G Street, you know, are owned by Strongback Properties, for example. Um, you know, they're, they're not interested in doing housing for homeless. And so we really only had one property where 250 East Street was created, where, you know, the city had control of that property, and we're able to create these zones. We now have an opportunity where we know that there's a project proponent who would like to open this, um, you know, permanent supportive housing on these parcels. And so making them so they're appropriately zoned, um, makes sense for that project.
Thank you. Yeah, it seems like, you know, we just had conversations about the importance of public input in our projects and people feeling like, um, you know, they weren't getting opportunities. So, I mean, to me, it makes the most sense to go with option two and then hold a special meeting so we can make those deadlines and not lose any funding.
Any other questions, um, before we go to public comment?
Um, I, I do just want to add, I, I mean, I have received a number of, of emails, um, largely in support of this ordinance, or at least this project going forward. Um, you know, they, they've all popped up within the last, yeah, couple of weeks when this was announced, and there has been some outreach meetings, but, and then from, you know, what I've seen, the, the meeting, uh, the community meeting that they did too, was largely supportive of the project, so.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. And I would say that, um, I, I appreciate the Planning Commission's, uh, input, but that option one and making sure that we do hit all the deadlines, um, guaranteed seems really important, especially with the extra funding on the line.
Okay, we'll go ahead and we'll do, um, public input, and then we can, um, continue our conversation and entertain motions.
All right. Our first speaker, um, is a phone-in, ending in 5653. Go ahead.
Hi. Um, I, I have just recently learned about this project. And speaking as an individual who spent several years of my life as a child and a young adult without a house to live in, and as somebody who has spent most of my last 30 years working with, um, our most vulnerable clients, including clients served by Betty Chin and the Mission, and the Street Outreach, and the Raven Project, and particularly, um, Arcata House clients, um, working with people with substance abuse issues, dual diagnosis, um, um, clients who'd had severe trauma, et cetera, and knowing the, um, the extent of our housing issues and the need to house homeless individuals, I am absolutely positively against this project for multiple reasons. Um, before pursuing this, I want you to take a look at the one project you mentioned down on E Street, which housed 31 people, only six of which were Arcata residents, and brought the rest of them in from other areas to house in Arcata. And the, it was a horrible, horrible failure on many levels. Um, there's, per capita, very many, several deaths out there. Two individuals I was credited with saving to lives, but two of those individuals myself that could have died out there. Um, look at the number of police records, ambulance calls, tenant complaints, hear from those people who have worked and resided there, and get some feedback from them. And you say that there was this outreach to the Valley West people, but I mean, you've spent three hours talking about this other project, and most of the people that I know of are barely now hearing about it. Um, and if there is this deadline to meet, and like, how long ago did you find out about this grant, and when did this outreach start? Um, you can expect at least, at least a 7% loss in property values out there. We already have, um, policing problems and crime problems out there. I believe Chief Ahern could probably speak to that. Um, take a look at, with the 31 residents and the problems that you had out there that were reported to the City Council, to, to the, to the county level even, and to multiple agencies, um, all the complaints that were going on out there, due to grossness management, not having onsite staff as promised, and all those things that, that did not come through on the part of Arcata House. Um, and I could go on to much more. Um, and then take a look at how many more people are going to be served in that community out in Valley West. And I want to know what's going to be different from what happened there. You're, you're bringing in a lot more people to place out there. And so how is that not going to compound the problems that you did not manage properly over at the ABC site run by Arcata House? I just want to know, like, have you made plans to put extra, like, police staffing out there, a police annex or something to help this situation that you're creating? Would you want your child going to the Montessori school?
Thank you so much for your input. That's actually three minutes, but thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Yeah, well, that's just great. You're welcome.
All right. Our next speaker is, uh, I think Lindsay, Lindsay or Dawn, go ahead.
Hi. Um, I am in favor of this, um, whole project. I have spent the last decade working with the homeless population. Um, I also, I did work for Arcata House for about almost 10 years. And I think that our Days End project that we had, uh, during COVID went well. Um, I think the E Street project also went well. There is onsite staff there. Um, there was staff available at the Days End also. Um, I feel like, I feel like this is a great, a great thing. I know it was brought up last night at the commission that it's going to lessen the amount of people that rent or that come in for a room in these motels. But if we're being serious about it, a majority of the people who stay in these two, um, motels are typically homeless folks anyway, who get their SSI check at the beginning of the month and go stay in these specific motels until the money runs out. Um, I think Arcata House is an incredible organization. Um, you know, I know that flaws were just mentioned. I'm sure every organization has them. Um, but I'm just really in support of this, and everyone is very up in arms about housing the homeless with the Gateway Project. Just, I, just digressing for a second, low income doesn't state and doesn't mean that homeless people are going to get housed. Um, permanent supportive housing, though, you cannot have an income and get a voucher and still be housed. And that's where a lot of our homeless people are at right now. And so, I don't know, I just think it's a great opportunity, um, to get some of our folks off the street, and I am 1,000% for it.
So am I.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lindsay and Dawn.
All right. Our next speaker is Catherine. Go ahead, Catherine.
Hello. Um, I spoke on the last one. I live in Valley West, in the Villa de Val community over here, um, near Cricklewood on, on Valley West Boulevard. So we're just down the street from both of these two hotels. And I want to point out, 130 rooms between the two properties. Currently, those rooms are already there and get rented out multiple times each month to anyone coming into the county, including transients who have no commitment. There's a high turnover there. People, the homeless population rents there for a few days each month when they get their checks. And then, you know, they run out of money. Conversion to permanent supportive housing will create 130 or more residents, permanent residents, long-term residents, who have a long-term stake in the community. They can build community relations with those of us who already live in the neighborhood. Um, at one of the meetings, um, I attended the, the Zoom meeting on December 1st. I was one of the people there. I know one suggestion was made at one of the meetings, either that one or the, the one for the target population, that the Red Roof property could also support a community garden. And that wouldn't have to be just to those, those residents. It could be something jointly with the residents of Valley West. These people are already here. These people are already here. They, many of them have lived in our community for decades. I personally know some of these homeless individuals who have lived in the community for 10, 20, even 30 years. And we owe it to our community to help them transition to a permanent residential situation. So I'm in support of it. I have talked to a number of neighbors and people in the community who are by, you know, in many cases, not universally, but in many cases in support. But thank you for letting me address you. I'm going to sign off at this point.
Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Melissa. Go ahead, Melissa.
Hi, sorry, I have to take just a minute. Hello, my name is Melissa. I would like to echo what Lindsay said about ABC. I've been on that property and I've met those clients. I've seen the community that they've built. I've seen the staff that works for them and the activities that they've been able to have together. I've seen the gratefulness for the services that they get, such as like holiday gifts and holiday meals and just a friendly face to say hi. I also at this time want to say thank you to our local government for hearing our concerns about growing homelessness and the decline of affordable housing. As early, I'm going to read this, "As early as this, as early as 2010, the city identified Valley West as an area of concern. A park development grant application at the time stated that 29% of the population in that area were considered below poverty. Valley West is a current council goal and has been since as early as 2013. Although I'm here as a private citizen, I do know that the Public Safety Committee has prioritized the Valley West neighborhood as well as supporting additional services for our homeless community members. In March of 2017, the city hosted a Valley West visioning session where attendees identified a host of issues. Among them were poverty-related problems such as homeless encampments, insanitary conditions, car camping, trespassing, as well as a lack of community gathering space, limited city programs and declining commerce due to inhospitable environment. That was a pandemic and four years ago. Meanwhile, I have personally watched housing specialists at Arcata House scour the land for affordable housing. And even when a unit is available, the rent is beyond the reach of most of our community members, much less our struggling homeless. At the Valley West meeting concerning this project, I was touched by the comments from the homeless community, community. They were so excited at the idea of being a contributing part of Valley West community. They were talking about programs such as peer mentorship, exercise programs, community gardens, open to the public. The homeless population, by the way, are already in our backyard. They are already part of our community. Let's give them the dignity they deserve and the services that will help them rebuild their lives. All of Arcata deserves and needs affordable housing, and this is the start. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
All right, our next speaker is Carol. Go ahead.
Hello, I'm Carol Graham and I lived, worked and owned property in Valley West for 50 years. I received no notice, even though I live a quarter of a block from one of these projects and I'm in the city's sphere of influence. I hope that the city council, like the planning commission, will find that you don't have enough information about the project and will elect to slow down the process until sufficient research and answers can be found. I'm opposed to this project. I was frustrated that no one from either project bothered to speak at the planning commission meeting last night. They couldn't be bothered. I feel the conversion of both the Days Inn and Red Lion into permanent supportive housing for homeless will segregate one of the lowest income groups to one block of Valley West, Valley West. Valley West is an area that is already significantly underserved by the city and already contains four of the largest affordable housing projects in Arcata. I have been told that most of the tenants in the Rio, Rio Del supportive housing project came from Eureka. I have estimated that only 10 to 15 Arcata homeless will be housed in the Red Roof Inn project in the first five years. What is the city's estimate? How many current unhoused residents of Arcata will actually be served? If, to get an accurate account, can you ask the continuum of care this question? If 140 permanent supportive housing units became available today from the present list, how many of them would be Arcata homeless? How much transient occupancy tax will the city lose by converting the version of 138 motel rooms, which is about a third of the rooms in Valley West? This loss is not addressed in the staff reports under budget or feasible impact. How many will people will these two projects house? One person per room, two people per room? What support will be available with them? Where, where will these residents go if they are kicked out? It seems reasonable that they will likely remain close by and join the Arcata homeless. What additional police support will there be? Tenants can't use or sell or buy drugs on the premises. Since there is a parking limit of one parking space for 10 units, many will be on foot and will walk to the surrounding areas of Valley West to use. I have read that the tendency cannot be tried, the tendency cannot be tried for, cannot be used as a, I have read the tendency cannot be used to remove a person because they're bad behavior. I have, I feel like the Valley West area is on its own and no one from the proposed project will help with these issues. So I, I would ask you to reject this. It's just too many units here. It, we already have.
Carol, that's your three minutes, but thank you so much for your input.
That's with all my things anyway.
Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Crystal. Go ahead.
Hi, I would just like to say that I am in favor of this project. I think it's a great opportunity to make change in the community, to kind of give people a place to be and rest with the support of staff from Arcata House. And that's what we do. We teach people, you know, to follow the rules and really become another part of society and they give back. We often are at the community cleanups with these same clients we're talking about that would go in to this project, right? They, they want to give back to the community. And I think everybody needs a helping hand once in a while. And I think this project could be a huge change for the community as a whole. Thanks.
Thank you, Crystal.
All right, our next speaker is Martin. Go ahead, Martin. You're on, Martin. You unmuted, but we can't hear you. Martin, you want to try again? All right, Martin, I'm going to mute you for, for a second. And Barbara, go ahead.
Oh, okay. I live in Valley West. I'm actually Carol Graham's neighbor. I don't know, do you hear that noise it's making or is it just on my end?
No, we hear it perhaps. Oh, it went away. Oh, went again.
Well, anyways, I'll just talk over. I deal with the homeless constantly. I pick up their garbage. I talk to girls that get beat up. I have to put locks on my gates because the homeless are bringing in stolen property. I give it to the police department. I am 100% against this. I think you should find somewhere else. Cal Poly is coming here and the Cal Poly people are going to need someplace to stay. If you come down Valley West and you see this big gated, a gate around the red roof and the Days Inn, a bunch of zombies, tweakers walking around. I'm in Valley West every day and they're laying on the ground, they're going to the bathroom on the ground. I don't really think you guys understand what's really going on because nobody is right here seeing it every day. I just had an 84-year-old guy out there with a, a bag and a little picking up garbage from the garbage from the homeless. I think you're doing an injustice to Valley West by doing this. I think you should find a place where it's not the center of attention. You're going to ruin all the businesses over in Valley West and it's going to make our property value go down. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
All right, our next speaker is Phil. Go ahead, Phil.
Hi, my name is Phil. I live in Valley West and I also work for Arcata House Partnership. So with this property, I'm not bringing anybody into your neighborhood, I'm bringing it into our neighborhood because I live in this neighborhood. I live right behind Rays. And I would just question how you understand housing, housing affordability? Because we need 170 housing units affordable per year and we can't provide that. That's per year in Humboldt County. And if we can do that in one year, like, that's something, but I just hope you can understand what it's like to be, be homeless. And like I said, I fully support this because this is my neighborhood. This is my, my neighborhood. Yeah.
Thank you, Phil.
All right, our next speaker is a phone-in ending in 3463. Go ahead. A phone caller ending in 346, oh, there you go. Go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, my name is Martin Robusto. And I've had the pleasure of living in Arcata Mouse District, Marsh District since 2014. During that time, I witnessed Arcata dealing with many issues and problems, but none of them has been so troubling and persistent as the homeless problem. Arcata has tried many times to find solutions and unfortunately has fallen a bit short, to say the least. Hardly a week goes by without an article in one of our local newspapers talking about what we should do about the homeless or how we can help the homeless. There have been complaints of existing agencies not doing enough or not doing it the way individuals think it should be handled. There have been insults and derogatory remarks thrown at agencies that are struggling to keep up with the overpowering challenge of trying to assist the homeless citizens in this city and country. City and county, I'm sorry. Yet no one, neither private nor government, has been able to rally a force to make any real change or headway. And when they do, there are always some who would love the ideas, if not only not in my neighborhood. Please, not in my neighborhood. I believe that most people in Arcata generally want to help their homeless neighbors, but get stuck on whether or they want the homeless so uncomfortably close. Well, let me explain the fact of life. They are already here. They are in the Marsh District, the Plaza, the downtown, the highways, the forests, the beaches, the Creamery District and Valley West. And they are already, they are there already. And if you don't see them, you aren't looking. We certainly face, we are certainly faced with a rare opportunity, currently faced with a rare opportunity. We have funding, real funding. We have political support. We have a way better than average facility to house many of today's chronically homeless, and we have an organization run by an expert in all the areas that needs to make this program a success. That organization is Arcata House Partnership and that leader is Dr. Darlene Spoor. Let me tell you about Dr. Spoor, or Darlene, as many of her colleagues and friends know her. She has been recognized and awarded by Arcata, Humboldt County, the State of California and nationally for her work housing the homeless. She has a doctorate in education, educational leadership, a master's degree in human services, an earned certified property manager's license, and she was a licensed general contractor and an ADA compliance officer. She has been working for 30 years in diverse areas that all culminate in one thing. He knows her stuff. If you really listen to the presentation she will give and examine the part plans for this project, you will see that this person and organization will succeed in making the project work. When she's accepted employees, when she accepted employment at Arcata.
Um, I'm so sorry, but your, your three minutes are up, so we're going to have to move on, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Sherri. Go ahead, Sherri.
Hi again. Hey, I just want to say my partner and I strongly support the Housing First concept and think the community will benefit immensely from this project. It's too bad that we didn't have a discussion last night with Danco, Arcata House and the police chief, but hopefully that can happen ASAP. And I hope issues can be answered and resolved in time to maximize the funding that is currently available for this. I think if our community members have a home and a roof over their heads, maybe we won't see shopping carts full of their stuff everywhere. Maybe we won't see trash thrown everywhere. And is it better to have our community members snug under their own roof? Or should the fortunate among us continue to step over them on the sidewalk? I think the answer is obvious. We need this project ASAP. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri.
Okay, that is all the public comment that I hear on this item. I do know that Darlene Spoor and Kristart are here and probably have a few things they'd like to share with the council if you want to do that at this time or, okay. Darlene, do you want to go first?
I do. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Great. Council members, staff and members of the community, thank you for affording me this opportunity to present to you our idea for this project. Again, I am Darlene Spoor from Arcata House Partnership and I'm here to talk about a project Home Key application that we asked the city to sponsor. I'm happy to continue the discussion about housing, specifically affordable housing in our community. We have a rare opportunity to fund affordable housing for our community, in our community for people who are homeless. The city of Arcata is and has been a leader and innovative in supporting ways to provide services to people who are homeless, and so is Arcata House Partnership. We have served the community for the past 30 years. We provide outreach, shelter, permanent supportive services to people who are homeless. We pride ourselves on being responsive to the needs of our most vulnerable citizens. You wanted us to provide food and kindness when the power went out for an extended time and we did. You wanted us to manage an emergency tent shelter and we did. You wanted us to increase support from people who are homeless during COVID and we did with funding through Project Room Key. Building on the success of Project Room Key and the first round of Project Home Key, both of which we have or currently managing, Home Key Round Two continues a statewide effort to sustain and rapidly expand housing for persons experiencing homelessness or who are at risk of homelessness and thereby inherently impacted by COVID-19 and other health concerns. This rare opportunity to fund and quickly acquire and occupy affordable housing is one that I hope you support. This opportunity to access federal, access federal funds will allow the city of Arcata in partnership with Arcata House Partnership and Danco with their separate project to convert a motel to permanent supportive housing for people who are low income and homeless. There's a countywide effort to increase affordable housing and housing for people who are homeless. These two projects will be among them. Our Home Key proposal is to purchase the Days Inn in Valley West, then offer 60 units of affordable housing to people who are homeless and low income. Our proposal is to provide 24-hour onsite staff support with case management and housing stabilization specialists to assist people as they transition from being homeless to being housed, but we can't do it without your support. I want to take a moment to share our plan for the program, the facility and the support services for this program. Arcata House Partnership chose the Valley West area to concentrate services because of the large population of people who are homeless in that neighborhood. In 2020 and 2021, we've used the Days Inn as the location for Project Room Key program, which allowed us to serve 59 people by providing a by providing a safe, warm place to be while transitioning from homelessness and preparing to be housed. Serving the population at that location provided a significant benefit to the community and to the neighborhood. Arcata House Partnership has proven that we can manage a housing program with supportive services in the Valley West area with minimal complaints from the community. The program is referred to as Permanent Supportive Housing. We will implement a Housing First model, providing support and acceptance where people are at, a staff work to support them to make the adjustments from homelessness to being housed. This will not be a free service, but we will be an apartment complex like any other but for people who are experiencing homelessness. People will be required to pay 30% of their income in rent, but there will be no requirement to have an income to be welcome to our program. The program will implement a trauma-informed care approach, recognizing that each person will come to us with issues or concerns that may have led to their becoming homeless or that occurred while they were homeless. We will implement a racial equity strategy, ensuring that the tenant population represents the community makeup as closely as possible. There will be rules that we will implement, just like any other apartment complex. People will need to be kind and courteous to their neighbors. We don't... won't tolerate illegal acts. And we encourage people to become part of the community in new ways, in ways that allow them to have a permanent home. The program will welcome people who are homeless and low-income, who go to work every day, who are eligible, who are single or in a family, who have children, who are students, who need assistance applying for and obtaining entitlement benefits, who are seniors, who have had many roadblocks put in front of them and are ready to be housed. I can't say that there will be no concerns about behaviors in the neighborhood, nor can any other owner of an apartment complex. What I can say is that Arcata House Partnership staff will be available to minimize any such concerns and will provide case management to anyone who wishes it. The facilities will receive some alterations. The entire lot will be fenced. It will be a gated community. It won't look like a prison. It'll look like a gated community to provide protection for the people who will be living there. Each room will be renovated and changed to a studio, one-bedroom, or two-bedroom apartment. They will include a kitchenette. They'll be furnished, and they will be private apartments. The pool building will be renovated and will be used as a community center where people will be able to gather for social activities and events post-COVID and other uses. As many rooms as possible will be made usable by people with limited mobility or other physical challenges. Ramps and curb cuts will be provided. Two lifts will be installed so that people on the second floor will be able to access apartments without using stairs. And units will be equipped for people with hearing or visual limitations. The staffing pattern we propose is the current office will be used as an office and will provide 24-hour onsite staff. The staffing plan is to provide three case managers, one for every tenant, for every 20 tenants, along with housing stabilization staff to provide supportive services. Arcata House Partnership staff received twice monthly training so that they are trained and prepared to work with someone who may have physical, mental health, or substance use issues. The result: It is expected that the community will see fewer people who are homeless in Valley West because they'll be housed. The crime rate across the police department will be reduced. People will become part of the community in a whole new way. And community support will continue as they see progress. The Home Key Two program is one of the many efforts being implemented in our community to minimize homelessness. I'd like to address quickly just a couple of things that I heard. People commented that there were not a lot... There was not a lot of public notice and that residents of the community weren't notified. Well, residents of the community include people who are homeless, and we actively recruited, contacted, discussed, got input from hundreds of people who are homeless. They are residents of the community. So we did reach out to members of our community. Arcata Bay Crossing was a concern, and we certainly understand that. Prior to 2018, there were much more concerns about supportive services. And Arcata House Partnership in 2018 provided... Started providing daily supportive services, and we saw a significant decrease in the number of police calls and the number of ambulance calls and the number of concerns in that neighborhood. We at Arcata House Partnership serve over 300 people a year who are homeless. We know that they're here, and those are just the ones who come to us. We know they're here. We know the students who are homeless. We know people who go to work every day who are homeless. We know high school and middle school and elementary school students who are homeless with their parents. We, as a community, know that the numbers are much greater than 300. The homeless population in Arcata is substantial. We need to act, and fast, before more people die on the street, before more people become homeless, before more people suffer needlessly. I know that the city council does care about all of our citizens, and Arcata House Partnership is proposing a solution. Please support us to do this. Thank you.
Chris, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, I do. I'll just tell you a little bit about the Red Roof Inn project. Hi, my name is Chris Dart. I'm president of Danco Communities. We are working on the Arcata Red Roof Inn, which is located at 4975 Down West Boulevard. That facility is a building with... Currently has 78 large studio units. And I say "large" because they are quite large compared to what we typically see. And it also has a three-bedroom, two-bath house in the back with the onsite manager will reside. You know, 78 large studio housing units is a significant number. And Darlene mentioned the need. And that's a large unit count to be able to bring to market in a relatively low timeframe. So just to mention that the building itself, you know, it has a full commercial kitchen and restaurant space inside that... An indoor pool, large ballroom. And really, we see those areas as places where we can provide services, have large meeting rooms, have offices for onsite staff, service coordinators, case managers, and then room for expansion. So that's... There's a lot of space in the building. The building, the Red Roof Inn, one of the reasons why we were interested in it is because it's got good bones. That building's in great shape. It's been well taken care of. Back several years ago, there was a metal roof put on the building which really helped keep the building structure itself in good condition. So for relatively minor investment compared to what new construction costs, we're able to convert this hotel motel into permanent supportive housing. Our intent is to renovate the building to convert these units to permanent supportive housing. We're going to make major improvements to the property. And some of those are... We're going to put kitchenettes in every unit, new heating and cooling units, new flooring throughout, new closet space in each unit. We're going to have new furniture, new fixtures, new equipment. As mentioned, Darlene mentioned, we will as well have fully accessible units, both wheelchair impaired, visually and hearing impaired. We will be creating outdoor space. Some of the feedback we got from our meetings with the residents is that, you know, they want to see garden space and barbecue areas and a dog walk and recreational activities. And there's... The property there is a large property. There's ample space for... To do all that and for the residents to stretch their legs and have all these outdoor rec spaces and even room for expansion for the future. We will fence the entire property, but it will not look like an institution. It will be, you know, attractive fencing and controlled access for both, not just the residents, but for guests and vehicles. Plan on doing new landscaping throughout. And then, you know, on the operation side, same. As Darlene mentioned, we'll have 24-hour desk service, case managers, resident service coordinators, we'll have an onsite manager living there, and maintenance staff. We'll have many community programs similar to what Darlene mentioned. Now, I will say there's a lot that needs to happen to make this project become a reality. It's not a done deal at this point. We're really... This is the first step in determining, you know, if the council's willingness to move ahead and support this project, not only on the zoning, but also financially. We're also working with the county and DHHS to potentially apply to the No Place Like Home program and help pay for some of the onsite support services. We're investigating that, that will allow us to keep the property in operations for longer periods of time. But we need to... We still need to compete for the Home Key program and win that competition, both projects too. I would mention that, you know, we have experience with this, with No Place Like Home program and Home Key. We have our Bayview project in Eureka that was funded with No Place Like Home funds. And last year, we did a project in Oakland that we renovated, placed in service using the Home Key program. So we've done one and placed in service with this funding source and this program. And we are working on two other projects using Home Key, one in Sacramento and an additional project in Oakland. Our timelines are, as these applications are due, as mentioned, by the end of the month in order to get the bonus funds, and that's a significant funding source. You know, it would be a shame not to hit that. So we're really hoping that we can schedule special meetings and be in a position to apply by the end of the month, in January, because for the Red Roof Inn, that equates to over $700,000 of financing sources that we really need. We anticipate the construction is going to take six to eight months, and occupancy will be roughly four months from that, so total 12 months from the time we start. But again, you know, many things need to have to happen for this to come together, and this is the first step. So I think that's it. I mean, that concludes my formal comments. I mean, in conclusion, I would say that, you know, this project, Darlene's project, Arcata House Partnership's project, these are making a significant difference in providing housing units in a relatively short timeframe for an affordable, low investment. And we feel wholeheartedly that this will improve the community and provide housing for those community members to have the greatest need and need a helping hand. I'm here for questions. Thank you.
So do we have any questions for Chris or Darlene?
Yeah. Not for Chris or Darlene, I guess. I just have some comments.
Yeah, I have some comments also.
Okay. I... No, I actually was ready to make a motion. But go ahead with your questions and comments.
Well, I just wanted to make a comment just kind of about kind of the main concern that I feel like that we've heard is that it won't be people necessarily from Arcata that are getting housed, but they are people from Humboldt County. And Humboldt County has a housing crisis and has a lot of homeless people. And housing is a human right. And, you know, if we're housing somebody from Eureka or Rio Del, I honestly don't really care because that person is getting housing. And if Arcata can provide that as a service and be able to offer this many units and to provide support and be in the community and create a safe supportive space for these people, I'm 100% on board with it. And I have, you know, I'm just... That's not a huge concern for me because Humboldt County, I mean, we are a community. Arcata is not separate from Humboldt County. And I would rather see this housing, you know, be a concept and, you know, come to fruition than to let it die because we're not going to house only people from Arcata.
Yeah, I mean, I'm absolutely in support of this project. And I feel like, you know, we're not... It's really not a question of whether or not we're going to support it. I mean, to me, I think all we're talking about is whether or not to hold a special meeting so we can meet the deadline. You know, I think the Planning Commission works really hard, and we should, you know, respect their request to look at it. All we have to do is hold a special meeting. It's really easy. It'll take five or 10 minutes. The deadline can be met. It'll allow for more public comment. We have people that feel like they didn't get noticed. Again, you know, we've had a lot of conversation about that at tonight's meeting. You know, and I think this project will absolutely have a significant impact to residents and businesses. You know, the mayor just talked about how it's important to remember businesses are connected to people too. So I just... We just need to do this right. You know, it's very simple to allow the Planning Committee or the Planning Commission to discuss it one more time, hold a special meeting, and then meet the funding so we can still approve the project. So I'll make a motion to go with option number two and hold a special meeting.
Do we have a second? Okay, it looks like there's no second, so that motion fails.
I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance number 1554, amending the housing for homelessness, combining zone, allowing permanent supportive housing at two locations in the Valley West neighborhood.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we also wave reading of the text?
Oh, sorry. Wave reading of the text and consent to read by title only. Is that all you needed? Oh, sorry. And direct staff to place the ordinance for adoption on January 5th, 2022, city council agenda.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Vice Mayor Goldstein and a second by Councilmember Schaefer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, so I just want to have a discussion since it's 10 after 10. And this was quite the robust agenda. So yes, as mayor, I hold some responsibility for that, so I apologize. But we do... We've had a lot of great, engaging public input. So we... According to my count, we've got four more action items. Three specifically... Or two specifically related to what we're talking about. So just wondering if we want to... How much we think we can accomplish before 10:30? And if we want to go on after that, just considering that there are people that probably want to participate and do have to go to work or get up in the morning.
Yeah, I mean, I can go either way. I'm good to keep going and finish it, whatever you guys want to do.
Yeah, I would hope to at least get through the two items that have to do exactly with this project and maybe table at least the committee appointments and the other stuff for another time.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Did not mean to interrupt you. I was going to say, I'm totally fine continuing on. I feel like I appreciate your acknowledgement that folks are on the line, mayor. But I also think that the next few items, we can probably get through pretty quickly. And the last item, I'm not sure anyone will care what our... I mean, I'm sure it's very important to you all, but I'm not sure anyone's going to give public comment on what our liaison appointments are. So I feel okay just continuing on tonight, if that's all right with the rest of the council.
Let's go.
Okay, sounds like there is a consensus, so let's move forward. So next, we have item B, which is to adopt Resolution Number 212-23, authorizing application to the Home Key program and Resolution Number 212-35, approving a loan to Arcata House Partnership for the Days Inn Home Key project. So could we please have a staff report?
Yeah, I'm going to be exceedingly brief again because of the late hour and because we did just hammer up most of the issues associated with these. But adopting Resolution 21223 would authorize the application jointly with Arcata House Partnership for the Days Inn. And Resolution 212-35 would approve a forgivable loan to Arcata House Partnership that would allow us to enter into a regulatory agreement to ensure that those facilities are managed according to the Home Key requirements for 55 years. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Again, Darlene Spoor is on to answer any questions you have that I can't. And with that, you should take public comment and adopt resolutions.
Okay, do we have any questions? Okay, hearing none, let's go ahead and move towards public comment and input, please.
No public comment on this item.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 212... Oh, no, we're not on that one. Resolution Number 212-23, authorizing application to the Home Key program and Resolution Number 212-35, approving a loan to Arcata House Partnership for the Days Inn Home Key project.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Watson and a second by Councilmember Schaefer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Good, moving on to item C. Moving on to item C, adopt Resolution Number 212-33, authorizing the application to the Home Key program and Resolution Number 212-34, authorizing application for program income and approving two loans to Danco Communities for the Red Roof Inn Home Key project. Can we please have a staff report?
Yeah, so again, briefly, this project would implement the Red Roof Inn project that we discussed. I did want to take just a moment to explain a little bit of detail... I did want to take just a moment to explain a little bit of detail around the CDBG program income that we're looking to commit to the project. Um, we anticipate that by the time the project is approved and we're ready to, uh, fund a loan with CDBG program income, that's Community Development Block Grant, we would have approximately $700,000. Um, but the, the number is a little bit flexible, um, based on our receipts for revenues for that program. In addition, we're working with CDBG staff to see if we can structure, uh, the loan in a way that would allow us to contribute program income that we have yet to receive into that fund. So it would be like a sinking fund for our program income. And so we've structured this so that we're asking for, uh, the ability to make a loan of up to $2 million with the, uh, program income from CDBG. Now, these terms would be slightly different. The Home Key Project, or the Home Key Funds would be, again, a forgivable loan, 55 years. Uh, would accrue interest, but all that interest and principal would be waived, uh, once this term is satisfied. The program income loan is set up like our typical CDBG program income, uh, loans where the project would make residual receipt payments. And so if the project earned revenue, which, you know, is unlikely, uh, unless the, the rents can be subsidized in some way, shape, or form. But if it does make revenue, then that revenue is paid back, that loan is, is paid back over time. And so I just wanted to distinguish between those two projects with that one, one distinction.
Okay, do we have questions for Director Loia? Okay, let's go ahead and go to public.
Yeah, really quick, I'm sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
Could you remind me how the loans are being funded, please?
The, the loans are being funded by, um, a co-application to the Home Key Program. And the way that ACD runs a Home Key Program is that they actually make a grant to both the city of Arcata and the app, the co-applicant Danko Communities in this instance. Um, and we would be making a loan to Danko for those funds. Basically, that's the way of us conveying our, um, uh, responsibilities to that grant to Danko and putting them on the hook to repay the entire grant amount if they don't fulfill those obligations. And then the program income loan is locally held Community Development Block Grant Funds that we generate revenue from business loans and housing loans, uh, that we then loan out. And the reason why that loan is based on residual receipts, that loan needs to be repaid is because that's sort of our local, um, pool of, um, community development, uh, funds that we can loan out for these projects that have community benefit for low-income people.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 212-.
Oh, we have to do public comment?
Oh, go for it. I can still make the motion, then we can do public comment.
Go ahead.
Well, let's go ahead and do, um, public comment if we have any.
Uh, there's no public comment for this item.
I will make a motion to adopt resolution number 212-33, authorizing a joint application to the Home Key Program and resolution number 212-34, authorizing application for program income and approving loans to Danko Communities for the Red Roof Inn Home Key Project.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Watson and a second by Councilmember, um, Matthews. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, so next we have item D, which is to approve an application for an encampment resolution funding program. Can we please have a staff report?
Yes, mayor and council, um, I will try to make this brief. On November 3rd, your council received a presentation from Cooperation Humboldt on the potential development of a microhouse village. Their particular concept of the microhouse village would construct a common area with kitchen and washing and restrooms and then 15 separated detached bedrooms spaced out around a property. Uh, it also was comprised of onsite case management with links to health services, sort of a village structure to reinforce the existing community networks and build supportive relationships, community engagement expectations for the residents, active participation in the self-governance of the microhouse village, uh, meditation training, peer resolution of disputes, and community health worker training. And then rent payments to build up a rental history with the possibility for a share of the rent to be saved in an account for their housing and, and other work expenses. So Cooperation Humboldt has, uh, through that presentation, I think we learned, has been working on this, um, for probably about nine months. And we have some, um, representatives of Cooperation Humboldt here tonight to answer any questions. But they have identified a grant source which only cities or COCs, continuum of care, are eligible to apply for. And it would allow the build-out of an approximately two years of operational cost to fund a pilot microhouse village. Um, it's called the Encampment Resolution Funding. And so the program funds local demonstration projects that provide services to support people that are currently living in encampments as well and, and pathways for those individuals to safe and stable housing. Simultaneously, also results in the restoration and the return to the intended use of the area where the encampment has been living for a period of time. So the city would need to support the grant in terms of being the lead applicant and to provide a site, uh, that would be committed to the project. So what's before you tonight is a request from Cooperation Humboldt to potentially use one of the two Alder Grove sites that the city owns. Um, we've talked a lot about public engagement. This, this grant application is due December 31st, and it just really came up within, just before we set the agenda for this meeting. So, um, we have not, I just want you to know, have not done a lot of community engagement around potential sites for this. Uh, but the request for you tonight is to approve a site that we've had a long-time community discussions around potential use for this type of use. And then we will work with Cooperation Humboldt. There still are several sites, private properties and public properties that they've been looking at. And so we will do public outreach along with that grant application period. Um, and then ultimately choose, you know, what would be the most suitable site for, for the project. Then, then one fit between the Alder Grove site, uh, is that Valley, uh, is that this, Cooperation Humboldt has been doing a lot of engagement work in the Valley West neighborhood. So one of the very natural encampments that they, um, are very interested in working with is the encampment at Carlson Park. So that coupled with, you know, hopefully the grants that we will be receiving for restoration and development of that site could create a really nice pathway for that project development. Uh, but there's a lot of work and heavy lifting that needs to be done between now and then. This would just be the first step in that. And they're here tonight if you have questions.
So I think speaking to the public engagement piece, this, using these parcels has come up in the past, um, since I've been on the council one. You know, I can just tell you, uh, from my experience, what I imagine it looking like or the neighboring businesses, you know, not being very happy with it. Um, but, uh, you know, I think, uh, because I have prior experience with the, um, public input and I imagine that, um, we would be getting basically the same public input, I'm comfortable with moving forward with this.
I do know, speaking of outreach, that Kuna has been doing a lot of outreach in the West Valley, um, neighborhood and a lot of outreach with, um, the encampment at Carlson Park. And if somebody is there that wants to speak to it briefly, um, I'd love for you to tell the council about it.
Um, I will bring in Sequoia. And then there was one. And Sabrina. So between the two of you, I think you know who would best speak to the community outreach that you've done in that region.
Yeah, I think if Sabrina can jump in on this and then I'll say some things afterwards. Oh, it looks like she's.
Sure, I'll speak. Um, I am Sabrina. I've been doing, uh, street outreach for Cooperation Humboldt. I'm not associated with Kuna. Um, Kuna is a separate entity doing outreach in the Valley West area, but we are related and a member on Kuna is also doing outreach for the Street Outreach Program. Um, I've been spending a lot of time personally in the Valley West area, specifically around Carlson Park and really connecting with, um, the individuals living back there and really identifying that there is a strong community there. And, um, also identifying that the city is really wanting to find a way to, um, get people to relocate out of that park area for environmental reasons, um, for reasons of wanting, you know, wanting that park area. Um, but there are people there currently living and, um, we've been doing our best to support them and, um, maintain their community style, um, living and supporting one another. And we've noticed that, um, our presence there has really encouraged them to continue to work together and they really want to be a part of the solution. Um, you know, I see them in really huge ways stepping up to try to work with us and support one another and utilize the resources that we're able to offer to create more community and cohesiveness within their community. And so I see this grant as an opportunity to take what is there and, um, allow it to continue in a transitional housing, um, setting where these individuals can, um, go through the process of healing and coming out of their situation as a collective and explore this, this community, um, housing style that is, um, getting a lot of attention, um, as an alternative to housing. So I think this would be a great opportunity for Arcata to explore that and, um, create a project like that with folks that are living in community already. And I think that, um, the relationships that we've built out there really put us in a really great position to work with these people because they're really wanting to work with us and, um, involve them in the process of creating this sort of solution. Um, if you have any questions, I can try to answer them.
Thank you, Sabrina, and thanks for hanging in there till the late hour. Appreciate it.
I, I would love to add a couple of things too, whenever the most appropriate time is for that.
Um, go for it.
Okay, awesome. Thank you all so much for staying up so late. To be, uh, to make this happen. It did, the deadline did come up pretty quickly. And, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually stop my video because it's kind of doing a weird feedback thing to me. But, um, anyways, yeah, really appreciate everyone staying up. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to say the two really appealing things about this grant are, um, one, that it targets a community, uh, in Valley West, essentially. Along the Mad River Bar there is what we're really looking at. That's exciting. And by the way, I, um, I have met most of you, but I'm Sequoia Falk. I'm with Cooperation Humboldt, along with Sabrina. Just introduced myself. But, um, it targets a community that would be essentially in the Valley West area. So this is an existing encampment in that area. And I know we have heard a lot of calls of people concerned about, um, things that are bringing more houseless individuals into Valley West. This would be an existing encampment in that area that we'd be targeting. That is a, a, a big appeal. And the other thing is they're looking for creative solutions to get these people into, uh, transitioning out of a homeless-type situation and into permanent housing. And so the micro shelter community that we're proposing is a creative solution. Um, and it's been proven in other areas. But I think the fact that the grant is looking to do both those things is something that is both appealing, should be appealing to residents in, um, Arcata and in the Valley West area and also is really appealing to our project because it's not so specific as something like a Room Cure, a Home Key Grant that has to, is much more suitable for like a traditional, um, hotel conversion or, or other means of, of solving this problem. So thanks again for hearing us out and we're happy to answer your questions the best we can. And sorry for the, a little bit frazzled with the late night. Um, I've been on since seven, waiting for this to come up. And I know you all have been here since longer than that, so I will stop talking now.
Thank you so much, Sequoia. I'm just going to go ahead and recommend that the council authorize the city manager to submit an encampment resolution grant application to the state of California. Do I need to read this whole thing?
Um, maybe if, before you jump into that, let's go ahead and do public comment.
Oh, yeah.
To see if there is any. Yeah, and then we'll go back to that if you don't.
I have a question too.
Looking for public comment. And I'm seeing no public comment and all you'd have to read is the title when you get there, but go ahead, Councilmember Watson.
Um, yeah, I was just wondering, um, is Nancy still with us?
Um, she is not still with us.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, you know, I'm just thinking about, um, you know, moving forward to something about public comment and, um, you know, some of these businesses aren't going to be happy. And if it, you know, kind of gives them, you know, grounds to, to sue us over this because we didn't do any public comment. So I don't know the answer to that.
Well, we're, we're doing public comment. We.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, public input. Yeah, because we haven't done any public input on the project. So I'm, I'm still fine with moving forward with it. Um, but yeah, I guess we need to, we need to kind of own that, uh, moving forward with this that, you know, there could be, um, some potential.
But this is just approving an application, right? It's nothing more.
Well, it's approving the use of the Alder Grove.
In the application, we do need to commit a piece of property. So, you know, it would be, I mean, we will, we will talk in the application that we are still finalizing the encampment and still finalizing a piece of property, but that we do have one identified as the backup source. So, and I know that we have a strong commitment from Cooperation Humboldt to start that public engagement, you know, immediately, even, you know, upon, if we're going to move forward with this. Um, this site is, does have the SV2 zoning overlay, um, on that site. So I don't think from a legal perspective, um, I've got concerns. It's, it's really just much more from the public trust in the building, you know, that we've been attempting to do, albeit not reaching everybody as we heard tonight. But you also saw the efforts of how much public engagement we're trying to do around all of these projects. We will do something similar. And again, this is going to be a slow process, even once we get the money, if we get the money to then develop the project, so.
So I move to approve an application for an encampment resolution funding program.
I second. So we have a motion by Councilmember Matthews and a second by Vice Mayor Goldstein. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
We don't need to read the authorize the city manager and all that stuff? I mean, I'm pretty sure we do.
I will read it. So, um, I would like to recommend that the council authorize the city manager to submit an encampment resolution grant application to the state of California as released by the California Homeless Coordinating and Financing Council to support a microhouse-type shelter facility in Arcata for individuals currently living in local encampments and the approved, um, the use of one of the Alder Grove parcels for the program if a more suitable site is not identified.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes unanimously. Okay, that leaves us, last item is to go over our, um, assignments. And probably the late hour will just keep us from arguing too much over it. I'm sure we're all going to be real agreeable, right? Okay, so just to go through, um, to go through this in kind of a way that looks organic, um, our five JPA agency assignments. Everyone seemed to give first choice to the one that they're currently on, so that makes that easy. Um, in looking into the next section, it looks like, um, we can give everyone their second or third choice. Um, we've got, I don't know, not quite. So we have a little bit of negotiating to do. So we have Councilmember Watson has listed second choice for, um, Humboldt Bay Municipal Water. And so that, that would be fine. Um, no one else has asked for that one. And then Vice Mayor Goldstein for the hazardous materials response. That was her third choice. No one else asked for that one. I'm going to skip down to the League of California Cities. That was, um, my second choice. And again, no, um, well, we do have a third and a fifth choice. So for Matthews and Schaefer, that was your third.
You can have it.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Matthews.
So.
I mean, I know you have a couple that you want on the bottom one, so.
Just take the H, the municipal water, if that's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
No, okay. So then that leaves, um, the gaming commission. And so, um, Councilmember Watson and I both, um, put threes on those. I'm fine for you to take that one. We've, it's not something that we've ever met so far. Um, although we do have Vice Mayor Goldstein on there for choice four.
Um, I'm totally fine deferring since you both put it as your number three and, um, sticking with the, uh, hazardous material response as my second, uh, assignment in that section.
Okay, so Councilmember Watson, are you fine to have that extra assignment in this category?
Yep, no problem.
Is that fine with everyone?
Is that fine with everyone else?
Yeah.
All right, can we clarify a couple of things before we move from that category? So I think I heard both Councilmember Matthews and Councilmember Watson for Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. So one can be primary, one can be alternate.
I'll take whatever other one you want.
I'll be alternate.
All right, and then we'll just kind of go through. So primary on hazardous materials will be Council, or Vice Mayor Goldstein, and then alternate would be Councilmember Watson.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
I'm just going with other people that were, unless you wanna go through alternates any other way, okay. So then the Indian Gaming Commission would be Councilmember Watson, Councilmember, or Mayor Atkinson Azar?
Yeah, I can be the alternate.
Okay. And then League of California Cities, primary would be Mayor Atkinson Azar, and then the alternate on that, either Council, Vice Mayor, nope, either Councilmember Matthews or Schaefer, who's our alternate?
It's a quarterly meeting, so it's four times a year.
Oh, for the League of Cities?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm interested, because I'm not really, I'm only the primary on one, so I'll pick up another thing if people want me to do that. I'm happy doing that.
So, okay, so everybody just look through and see, make sure that you have one or two primaries in this category. And can we just refer to each other by first name for this process?
Who's still watching?
Both.
Primary, alternate. Would that be okay?
Sure, yeah. Karen, do you wanna, do you wanna lead us in that?
You bet. So for first one, HCOG, we've got primary as Stacy and alternate as Sarah. Those are the only two that put something in the box. Okay, so HTA, we, yeah, HTA, we have primary as Emily. And then alternate, I would put in here as Meredith, because she's a two, but Sarah also put a four, so. Okay. So HWMA, primary is Meredith, alternate is Emily? No, HWMA.
Oh, yes, that's fine.
Okay. And then RCEA, primary is Sarah, and we need an alternate. Can't be Meredith.
Brett is currently the alternate, but has not had to alternate.
Do you wanna be the alternate, or do you want me to be the alternate?
It doesn't matter to me.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to see.
Which one are we talking about again?
RCEA.
So I didn't pick that one, right?
Nope. Nobody did.
Yeah.
Nobody did. The tried and true RCEA, or.
I'm, I'll be the alternate, that's fine.
I usually try to go, so don't worry.
Okay, and then redact, the primary is Brett, and the alternate, we've got several interested, Sarah, Emily are both twos, and Meredith is a five.
I feel like I'm an alternate on a lot of these.
I was gonna say I am too. I am interested in redact, so.
It's up to you. I'm not wedded to it.
Me either, but I'll do it, and I would be happy to do it.
Oh, I guess I should look at the time. That, that time is not a good time for me, because I have Rotaract that night, so.
Okay, I'm happy to be the alternate.
All right, so Emily for alternate. Okay, Humboldt Bay Water Task Force. Primary Meredith, alternate Brett. H, or the Hazardous Waste, primary Emily, alternate Brett. The Local Community Benefits Committee for Indian Gaming, primary Brett, alternate Stacy, and then League of California Cities, primary Stacy, alternate Sarah. Back to Mayor for the second half.
Well, I don't have, the second half is dialed in as the first half.
Harder.
It's, yeah, the second half is harder.
There's some obvious ones.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's just, should we start at the top and walk our way down?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have Meredith asking for Chamber of Commerce first, and then I put five so I can be the alternate. And then for Main Street, I put that as my first choice, and Meredith put it as three, so.
I'm happy to be the alternate.
Okay, perfect. And then Arcata House Partnership, Sarah has that as one. And then it would either be Emily or Meredith for alternates.
I'm happy to do it, but I don't wanna steal anything.
And they only meet quarterly now, too. It's not monthly.
Okay, yeah, I'll be the alternate.
It's pretty low-key.
Okay, so then.
I'm also currently on Sister City, which they have also not been meeting monthly, so it's pretty low-key, so I can keep that one, too.
Okay, so then Emily, are you willing to be?
Absolutely.
Backup on that? Okay. So then Cooperation Humboldt, Meredith has that as one, which doesn't seem to be a problem to me, because it was four and five for Goldstein and Schaefer.
Yeah, I'm happy to continue with them.
Okay. And so then which one of you would like to be the alternate?
I'm open. Sarah, do you wanna do it? Because I feel like I have a couple in here, but you also.
You have, you have a good relationship with them, though, too.
Okay.
I'm, yeah.
Okay, I usually don't. Yeah, I feel like you're gonna, yeah. I'm happy to do it, yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, and so then for the COVID-19 Economic Recovery Collaborative, this one, we will have two members on. So Brett has that listed as first choice, so that works out. And then the second person, we all have twos on this, the three of us that responded, so.
I just, I wanted to maybe change it up and be on something like this just because I would like to have the opportunity to work more directly with city staff and my fellow council members. But I also have a lot of assignments, so.
Yeah, and I feel like I also kind of serve on economic recovery just by being with the chamber and an alternate for Main Street. So if you'd like to do that, it'd be cool.
Yeah, and I get to, I'm on Main Street, and a lot, there's a lot of overlap between Main Street Chamber. We all get to, that's who comes to those meetings. So if you would like that new experience.
Yeah, I would. Thank you, sounds great.
Okay, so for the Equity Arcata Advisory Team, we've got myself and Emily and Sarah. I think at this point, it's probably more of who doesn't have as many responsibilities.
I put that, but I can't go at that time, so.
See what is it? It is.
Don't know why I did.
2pm, okay.
Quarterly, I mean, I could at least be an alternate if it's quarterly. I don't have it.
And I'm happy to do it again, but it's also a cool experience if somebody else wants to, like, step in and do that, because I'd be fine being the alternate or just letting it go completely.
I'm happy to have a chance to do that.
Sure.
Okay, sounds good.
Do you want me to stay on as alternate? Or did someone else want that position as alternate?
You can, that's fine, you can stay on. It's fine with me, if it's fine with you guys.
Sounds great.
Okay.
Yeah, because I can't do it.
All right, and then we do need two people.
I really wanted to stay on that group, if that's okay?
Yeah, well, you did have it as one. And so Brett, then you and I had it listed. I'm, I'm fine either way, if you.
I mean, I really only have two things, the redact and the Economic Recovery Collaborative, so.
And I'm not writing it down, so Karen, how many things do I have?
You only have a couple, I think, too, so.
Primary, you have one primary in this section, so Main Street, and then you're alternate for Chamber.
Okay, so maybe if I could do that one, since I only have a couple, if that's cool with you? Okay, so I'll be that second person. Oh, and then.
And you also have.
Well, yeah, but then, yeah, I do have HSU, so I guess Brett, we can go, we can go back and renegotiate the. I haven't been a part of any of the homelessness or housing groups, so I'd love that chance, if that's okay?
Mm-hmm, of course.
All right, and in case anybody is still watching, I just wanted to say we're talking about ones, twos, threes, fours, and fives, and it absolutely does not reflect importance or anything. A lot of it has to do with times of meetings and our availability. So just to be really clear, please don't be offended by our number system. And are we taking public comment on this?
Anybody would like to make public comment on the 2022 council liaison appointments? Seeing none.
Okay, so.
Can I get a motion? I moved to approve these liaison appointments.
I second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so that brings us to our last chance for, for communication. So this, this time is provided for people to address council on matters that were not on the agenda. So if there's something you'd like to talk to us about that was not on our agenda tonight, please raise your hand. And if you are on the Zoom webinar, press star nine now. If you are on a phone line and you would like to make a public comment, no, press star nine. Raise your hand if you're on Zoom, press star nine if you're on the phone. And we will have speakers are limited to three minutes.
All right, just giving people a second, make sure we don't miss anyone. All right, we have, it looks like one speaker. Go ahead, James. Try to get it right this time, it says Jim, but I think James.
And I think I just unmuted properly. Yeah, well, James is my legal name, so that's why I go by that. So a couple of things. It was interesting watching the last bit of the process, and, and I do thank Brett Myers for continuing the process forward. In addition to that, can you turn your phone on? I was just wondering when this, the Planning Commission will also, will be taking up, sorry, I'm a minute, but just still got a phone on. Will be continuing the discussion about the Gateway Plan. If anybody can address that.
Do we know the date that they will be continuing that conversation, or?
Yeah, because when they ended the meeting last night, what it finished with was that they were gonna continue with further discussion on the Gateway Plan.
I don't have a date, but we're happy to get that out to you, James, for sure. I'll, you know, I'll check in. I don't know if that's been scheduled yet.
Is there any other public comment?
Seeing no other, oh.
Hello, are you still there?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, sir, I got muted. It must have been a mistake on somebody's part there. But I was just wondering, would 28 be an assumption of when the meeting will take place again, or will there be a special meeting?
Is that, do you want to finish any other comments you have first?
I would hope that David Loyall will get back on that. Otherwise, you know, and I was hoping maybe to make it a public comment, but have they not decided on that at this point, or?
Yeah, okay, did you have any other comments, so besides that? Before, I don't want you to get muted again until you're done with your comments.
Oh, no, no, absolutely. If you guys did that, it's not a big deal. I would say the only other thing was, is just in watching the process as far as allowing for one more special meeting with the Planning Commission, I was a little concerned about that, because it wouldn't have taken a lot of time. And I think it would still move a very important project ahead, but it would have honored the wishes of the Planning Commission. And after that, that's my last comment.
Okay, thank you, Jim. I don't have, I do not believe that the Planning Commission is having any special meeting scheduled on the Gateway Plan. So I believe the next time they would talk about it would be at a regularly scheduled meeting, but they have not set that agenda yet, and it might be dependent on other agenda items. So we'll, as soon as we know the date of the next Planning Commission meeting, we'll make sure that you're all notified, and I assume that you are signed up for e-notifications as well.
Okay, do we have any council or staff reports?
I just wanted to quickly thank Dylan for his 12 years of service to the city of Arcata. Thank you for keeping these meetings running so smoothly.
And staying here so late with us.
And can we get an update on the status of the safe parking program?
Yeah, I'll just make it really quick. So we have been looking at a property along Simole Boulevard. We did receive a copy of a draft lease from the property owner, so we're working through those details, and do hope to bring that and subsequent potential rent to you at your next meeting. So still moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just have to report that I did a ride along with the police department a few days back, and it went really well, during the farmer's market. I don't think we received a single call, so I just feel like it's a testament to the safe city we have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so we have the dates of future meetings, but we don't need to take formal action on that. It's just an FYI for all of us, make sure it's on our calendars. And it looks like we will be adjourning until the new year, so. Good.